Ladies and gentlemen, we're ready to begin this afternoon's board meeting. The school board meeting of May 5th, 2020 is now called to order. The time is 3:12 PM. Following the recommendation of Governor DeSantis and the Florida Department of Education, this meeting will be held virtually, streamed live, and will be posted to the district YouTube channel upon completion of the meeting. Please note that the chat feature for this Zoom meeting has been disabled. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential, and of the district's vision to be a world-class school system. This afternoon's agenda includes the invocation, the pledge of allegiance, one acknowledgement, public comment, consent action items, which include one item under executive services, four items under academic services, two of which are good cause. Dr. Atkins, please provide an explanation for these two items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have two items to bring you today. Both of these items are related to graduation. The first good cause item is approval of Piggyback Round Rock Independent School District for their virtual graduation with using Herff Jones. So that's the first one. The second one, the board always approves the graduation schedule. So we were able to secure dates as Mr. Simmons had indicated to you earlier for our large arenas, Hertz and Suncoast. So those dates are available, and we'll be asking for the board to approve those dates so we can get that communicated out to public.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. As presiding officer, I find that there is good cause to add these two items to the agenda. Also on this afternoon's agenda, three items under business services, one item under human resources, eight items under operations, and four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Done.
Miss Vaughn, and second by Mrs. Giovinelli. Mr. and Madam Chair. Motion carries.
Wait, I haven't done it. No?
Mrs. Giovinelli, do you want me to vote for you?
Yes, I had, uh, but...
Okay, I'll vote for you.
I lost it when I got back in.
The vote carries seven zero.
Thank you, Susan. Motion carries seven zero. Today, Mrs. Jacob will deliver the invocation, after which Ms. Vaughn will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Dear God, our world is broken, and we are more aware of that now than ever before. We pray that you might sustain us in all that you have given us to do in this moment. Especially, we pray for those involved in education and training. As our schools seek to continue their important work in stressful and difficult circumstances, would you please keep teachers and students safe and help them to care for each other? We pray for those who are facing critical points in their education, particularly those preparing for their final exams and assessments, and ask for a diligence in study that is surrounded at every point by a calm confidence in you and your provision. God, all our hope is in you. We trust your promises and that you will bring all your purposes to their fulfillment. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. At this time, Ms. Vaughn, please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. The character word for May is patience, which is the ability to wait calmly without complaining. So I've had to exercise patience this last seven weeks. Our quote for today is, "Patience is the calm acceptance that things can happen in a different order than the one you have in mind." David G. Allen. And I don't know if we see it, but the design displayed on the screen was created by Caitlin Chauncey, a ninth grader student at Estero High School. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Ms. Dupuy Bruno, please address the item of public comment.
The school board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. Pursuant to Executive Order 20-69 and the Department of Education directive dated March 17th, 2020, notice was provided to the public that all public comment will be accepted virtually by email. Virtual submission of public comment was required to be sent to the email address publiccomment@leeschools.net at least two hours prior to this afternoon's meeting and are limited to 3,000 characters or 450 words to be consistent with Board Policy 1.11 subsection 5A allotting a three-minute maximum per comment. No more than 60 emails from different individuals will be allowed to be addressed to the school board during the public comment portion of this meeting. No more than one hour will be spent on public comments. The emails shall be read in order as they were received. The board does not respond during public comment time to remarks made. At the end of public comment, the board chair will address the assignment of any concerns or requests made during the public comment to the superintendent. Madam Chair, I do believe that we have one individual in the boardroom.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Mr. Eldon?
And then we also, we also have some emails. So I don't know if you want to give the one individual first?
Yes, please, let's do that. Mr. Eldon?
I can go now. My name is Jill Hart, and I am what you call a stakeholder. I am a parent of a student currently enrolled in school in Lee County. I am here today to ask the board a few questions. I sent the board an email on April 23rd, 2020, and yesterday received a response from Melissa Giovinelli. In that email, I was informed that the board was not informed of Dr. Atkins' plan to change the school day to seven periods until March of 2020. That is a lie. Discussion began at a February 11th board briefing and was done at that time because all investigations were completed to provide the board the data it needed to make the decision. Fox 4 broadcasted a story and referenced to this topic on February 20th, 2020. Ms. Giovinelli, did you attend that briefing? Yes. But yet you told me that this wasn't brought to the board by Dr. Atkins until March 9th. I suppose my confusion on why Dr. Atkins did not receive the support of the board has to do with two reasons. It's an election year for three out of seven of you. Three out of seven of you have an education background. How does a realtor, an event planner, or an event planner know anything about education? A lawyer ensures no laws are broken, and an MBA crunches numbers. So I suppose if I want to buy a house or plan a wedding, I'd come to the board. Dr. Atkins has 31 years' experience in the Lee County School District. My humble opinion, he trumps all of you. The issue is rigged that due to timing, the board cannot care for all of its stakeholders. That is just plain insanity. I have worked in the county for 10 years, all of which was done with diverse populations. One thing that I can tell you is that everyone has a cell phone. With the amount of text messages, voicemails, phone calls, and emails I have received since the COVID shutdown, I can promise you one thing. People that want to know, no.
No.
I find it completely suspect that you hold a board meeting in the middle of a workday, yet state that your stakeholders need a chance to be heard. If you want to hear from them, you may want to consider having a meeting after the workday ends. You also might want to consider having any type of direction or signage outside your building to let people know where they're supposed to line up instead of trying to guess. The fact that no board minutes for 2020 are available online speaks volumes to me. Is that not a direct violation of the sunshine law? What are you trying to hide? The last comment I have is, I advise the board to make sure that the people they are dealing with are in fact unintelligent before you start treating them as such. I did about 10...
At this time, the three minutes are up. Hello? Hello?
Time has expired. We've muted the mic.
Thank you. Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
We have 19 emails that were sent in, and I will go ahead and read those emails.
Thank you, Ms. Bruno.
Thank you. We are parents of a...
I'm sorry, did you want me to time the comments?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Okay. "We are parents of a bold, uppercase, Fort Myers High School, unbold, senior, set to graduate in the coming weeks. We are frustrated and angry at the lack of transparency around alternate graduation plans. Virtual graduation is not an acceptable substitute, and while the district has stated both a virtual and in-person graduation are being planned, details are lacking. We," bold and capitalized, "demand, unbold, an in-person graduation ceremony for every Lee County high school class of 2020 graduates. We," bold, capitalized, "demand, unbold, dates and locations to be published and to be bold, capitalized, communicated, unbold, about these plans. Our students deserve more than lip service and promises of wanting to do the right thing. The lack of transparency is appalling. The governor's safe, smart step-by-step plan for Florida's recovery states that social gatherings can take place with appropriate social distancing considerations. Alternate graduations in either large venue arenas like Hertz, Lico, or FSW arenas can allow for this. Outdoor football fields can also account for this. Do not insult the class of 2020 by saying they cannot be disciplined enough to comply with social distancing rules. And one board member has commented, for this is one of the most important days in their lives. Capitalize, bold. All options need to be exhausted, unbold. If a large venue arena or outdoor field is selected and limits are placed on spectators, trust that your students and parents can comply appropriately. Bold, capitalized. This is about the graduates, unbold. Various districts across the state have publicly stated their plans for in-person graduations in July. Dates, times, and locations have been communicated to parents. Each of these districts have noted that graduations will comply with the current state, federal, and CDC guidelines in their execution. Why is it so difficult for Lee County to do the same? How foolish will the district look when in-person graduates continue through the summer and our kids in Lee County tuck away their video memories? This is bold, capitalized, shameful, unbold. For 13 years, we've asked our children to, bold, capitalized, "trust, unbold, their teachers and administrators, and now, capitalized, is the time to reward the loyalty. Bold, capitalized. Do the right thing, unbold. The class of 2020 cannot be remembered with an asterisk. Respectfully, Tina and Dennis Shelley, parents of Jack Shelley, Fort Myers High School, class of 2020. The following remarks are to be read at the board meeting, 5/5/2020. I am a parent of a Fort Myers High School senior set to graduate in the coming weeks. I am also a 1988 graduate of Fort Myers High School that graduated on our football field. I am very sad for my senior that has missed so much already and am very determined to make an in-person graduation happen before she begins her next chapter. A virtual graduation is not an option, and I feel it downgrades the 13 years of hard work these kids have put in when they have already lost their senior prom, time with friends in school, school sports, club recognition, and so much more. We," bold, capitalized, "an in-person graduation ceremony for every Lee County high school class of 2020 graduate. We," bold, capitalized, unbold, "demand," I'm sorry, bold, capitalized, "demand, unbold, dates and locations to be published and to be bold, capitalized, communicated, unbold, about these plans. Our students deserve more than lip service and promises of wanting to do the right thing. The lack of transparency is appalling. The governor's safe, smart, step-by-step plan for Florida's recovery states that social gatherings can take place with appropriate social distancing considerations. Alternate graduations in either large venue arenas like Hertz, Lico, or FSW can allow for this. Outdoor football fields can accommodate his request." Sorry, I lost my place here. "Can account for this. Do not insult the class of 2020 by saying they cannot be disciplined enough to comply with social distancing rules. And one board member has commented, for this is one of the most important days in their lives. Capitalize, bold. All options need to be exhausted, unbold. If a large venue arena or outdoor field is selected and limits are placed on spectators, trust that your students and parents can comply appropriately. This is about graduates, all capitalized and bold. Various districts across the state have publicly stated their plans for in-person graduations into July. Dates, times, and locations have been communicated to parents. Each of these districts have noted that graduations will comply with the current state, federal, and CDC guidelines in their execution. Why is it so difficult for Lee County to do the same? How foolish will the district look when in-person graduations continue through the summer and our kids in Lee County tuck away their video memories? This is bold, capitalized, shameful. For 13 years, we've asked our children to, bold, capitalized, "trust their teachers and administrators, and now," capitalized, "is the time to reward that loyalty. Bold, capitalized. Do the right thing."
Ms. Bruno, it's time.
Thank you. And just for the board members, this was from a different person, Holly Woodman, class 1988. "Speaking for the teenagers that graduate this year, they deserve the respect of walking for their graduation. Putting it off until June at Polk County is completely acceptable by them as long as it happens. It is a 13-year honor. To virtually do this is a slap in the face to them. I know several and would be attending the ceremony. I can't even imagine if it would have been my own children without the proper opportunity to walk this path. It is completely okay for the entire county to go to Walmart, Public, Home Depot, but for them to have this honor is not. This makes no sense at all. Please reconsider the options. This will be a lifelong memory. Thank you in advance for reconsidering. The Vandy Teresa Anderson Terry. The parents of a Fort Myers High School senior set to graduate in the coming weeks. We are frustrated and angry at the lack of transparency around alternate graduation plans. Virtual graduation is, capitalized, not an acceptable substitute, and while the district has stated both a virtual and in-person graduation are being planned, details are lacking. We," capitalized, "demand an in-person graduation ceremony for every Lee County high school class of 2020 graduate. We," capitalized, "demand dates and locations to be published and to be," capitalized, "communicated about these plans. Our students deserve more than lip service and promises of wanting to do the right thing. The lack of transparency is appalling. The governor's safe, smart, step-by-step plan for Florida's recovery states that social gatherings can take place with appropriate social distancing considerations. Alternate graduations in either large venue areas like Hertz, Lico, or FSW arena can allow for this. Outdoor football fields can also account for this. Do not insult the class of 2020 by saying they cannot be disciplined enough to comply with social distancing rules. As one board member has commented, for this is one of the most important days in their lives. Capitalize. All options need to be exhausted. If a large venue arena or outdoor field is selected and limits are placed on spectators, trust that your students and parents can comply appropriately. Capitalize. This is about the graduates. Various districts across the state have publicly stated their plans for in-person graduation into July. Dates, times, and locations have been communicated to parents. Each of these districts have noted that graduations will comply with the current state, federal, and CDC guidelines in their execution. Why is it so difficult for Lee County to do the same? How foolish will the district look when in-person graduations continue through the summer and our kids in Lee County tuck away their video memories? This is capitalized, shameful. For 13 years, we've asked our children to, capitalized, "trust their teachers and administrators," and capitalized, "now is the time to reward that loyalty. Capitalize. Do the right thing. The class of 2020 cannot be remembered with an asterisk. Our students have missed so much. Do not add this to the list. Joella and Pete Consolatio. Having my firstborn child miss out on a very momentous occasion of physical graduation breaks my heart. She, along with the whole student class of 2020, deserved to throw their caps together." She, along with the whole student class of 2020, deserved to throw their caps together. Allowing her to say farewell to their peers and teachers would give my daughter a sense of closure as she transitions into the next phase of her life. My daughter feels as if her senior year was stolen from her and her friends and would also love to walk the halls one last time. Sincerely, Tasha M. Delio. We are parents of a Fort Myers High School senior set to graduate in the coming weeks. We are parents of capitalized, Fort Myers High School, uncapitalized, senior set to graduate in the coming weeks. We are frustrated and angry at the lack of transparency around alternate graduation plans. Virtual graduation is capitalized not an acceptable substitute. While the district has stated both a virtual and in-person graduation are being planned, details are lacking. We, bold capitalized, demand an in-person graduation ceremony for every Lee County High School Class of 2020 graduate. We, bold capitalized, demand, unbold, dates and locations to be published and to be bold capitalized communicated, unbold, about these plans. Our students deserve more than lip service and promises of wanting to do the right thing. The lack of transparency is appalling. The governor's safe smart step-by-step plan for Florida's recovery states that social gatherings can take place with appropriate social distancing considerations. Alternate graduations in either large venue areas like Hertz, Lico, or FSW arena can allow for this. Do not insult the class of 2020 by saying they cannot be disciplined enough to comply with social distancing rules. As one board member has commented, for this is one of the most important days in their lives. Bold capitalized. All options need to be exhausted. Unbold. If a large venue arena or outdoor field is selected and limits are placed on spectators, trust that your students and parents can comply appropriately. Bold capitalized. This is about the graduates. Unbold, uncap. Various districts across the state have publicly stated their plans for in-person graduations into July. Dates, times, and locations have been communicated to parents. Each of these districts have noted that graduations will comply with current state, federal, and CDC guidelines in their execution. Why is it so difficult for Lee County to do the same? How foolish will the district look when in-person graduations continue through the summer and our kids in Lee County tuck away the video memories? This is bold capitalized shameful. Unbold, uncap. For thirteen years, we've asked our children to bold capitalized trust, unbold, uncap, their teachers and administrators, and capitalized, now, uncap, is the time to reward that loyalty. Bold capitalized. Do the right thing. Unbold, uncap. The class of 2020 cannot be remembered with an asterisk. One regards, Colleen Corofano, Ivy Senior, Taylor Corofano, Class of 2020. I'm sure you're getting numerous emails in reference to graduation ceremonies. With that said, I would just like to say my husband and I would really like a ceremony. Our graduate would also like one as well. She mentioned, she mentioned she and some of her classmates would prefer to do graduation at school, on the football field, but into two ceremonies to help with distance. Really, they just want one last time to see their classmates in their school before they all head their separate ways. Thank you for your attention on this matter. I trust you are considering all options to make this right for our seniors and safe for all of us. Have a great day. Regards, Mary Wilson. We are parents of a Fort Myers, um, I'm sorry, we are parents of a capitalized Fort Myers High School, uncap, senior to graduate in the coming weeks. We are frustrated and angry at the lack of transparency around alternate graduation plans. Virtual graduation is capitalized not, uncap, an acceptable substitute. And while the district has stated both a virtual and in-person graduation are being planned, details are lacking. We capitalized, demand, uncap, an in-person graduation ceremony for every Lee County High School Class of 2020 graduate. We capitalized, demand, uncap, dates and locations to be published and to be capitalized communicated, uncap, about these plans. Our students deserve more than lip service and promises of wanting to do the right thing. The lack of transparency is appalling. The governor's safe smart step-by-step plan for Florida's recovery states that social gatherings can take place with appropriate social distancing considerations. Alternate graduations in either large venue areas like Hertz, Lico, FSW arena can allow for this. Outdoor football fields can also account for this. Do not insult the class of 2020 by saying they cannot be disciplined enough to comply with social distancing rules. As one board member has commented, for this is one of the most important days in their lives. All cap. All options need to be exhausted. Uncap. If a large venue arena or outdoor field is selected and limits are placed on spectators, trust that your students and parents can comply appropriately. Capitalize. This is about the graduates. Uncap. Various districts across the state have publicly stated their plans for in-person graduations into July. Dates, times, and locations have been communicated to parents. Each of these districts have noted that graduations will comply with the current state, federal, and CDC guidelines in their execution. Why is it so difficult for Lee County to do the same? How foolish will the district look when in-person graduations continue through the summer and our kids in Lee County tuck away the video memories? This is capitalized shameful. Uncap. For thirteen years, we've asked our children to capitalize, trust, uncap, their teachers and administrators, and capitalized, now, uncap, is the time to reward that loyalty. Capitalize. Do the right thing. The class of 2020 cannot be remembered with an asterisk. I am a parent of capitalized, Fort Myers High School, uncap, senior set to graduate in the coming weeks. I'm very frustrated and angry at the lack of information around alternate graduation plans. Virtual graduation capitalized not, uncap, an acceptable substitute. And while the district has stated both a virtual and in-person graduation are being planned, details are lacking. These students and families deserve an in-person graduation ceremony for every Lee County High School Class of 2020 graduate. We capitalized, demand, uncap, dates and locations to be published and to be capitalized communicated, uncap, about these plans. Our students deserve more than lip service and promises of wanting to do the right thing. The lack of information is appalling. The governor's safe smart step-by-step plan for Florida's recovery states that social gatherings can, can take place with appropriate social distancing considerations. Alternate graduation in either large venue arenas like Hertz, Lico, or FSW arena can allow for this. Outdoor football fields can also account for this. The football field stands seat six thousand seven hundred. Do not insult the class of 2020 by saying they cannot be disciplined enough to comply with social distancing rules. As one board member has commented, for this is one of the most important days in their lives. Capitalize. All options need to be exhausted. Uncap. If a large venue arena or outdoor field is selected and limits are placed on the spectators, trust that your students and parents can comply appropriately. Capitalize. This is about the graduates. Uncap. Various districts across the state have publicly stated their plans for in-person graduations into July. Dates, times, and locations have been communicated to parents. Each of these districts have noted that graduations will comply with the current state, federal, and CDC guidelines in their execution. Why is it so difficult for Lee County to do the same? How foolish will the district look when in-person graduations continue through the summer and our kids in Lee County tuck away their video memories? This is capitalized shameful. Uncap. For thirteen years, we've asked our children to trust their teachers and administrators. Capitalized, now, uncap, is the time to reward their loyalty. Capitalize. Do the right thing. Uncap. The class of 2020 cannot be remembered with an asterisk. Thank you. Debbie and Bill Clark, Justin Clark, Fort Myers High School, Class of 2020.
Hi, good afternoon. I hope that you are healthy and doing well in these troubling times. I am a senior at Fort Myers High School and I'm reaching out to communicate with you my concern about graduation for the class of 2020. I am my senior class vice president, so events like these are extremely important to me. The other officers and I have spent the entire year planning for events like graduation just for them all to be taken away from us by something that is out of our control. I have lost my final lacrosse season with my team, my senior prom, goodbyes with my favorite teachers, and my final time walking the halls of Fort Myers High School, among many other things I have been looking forward to for years. I regret not knowing my last day of school before spring break was actually my last day ever as a high school student. I feel deprived of the proper closure with my second home and Green Wave family of the last four years. I'm writing to say thank you for not forgetting about us. I fear that the class of 2020 will be swept under the rug and forgotten. I fear that graduation is the only thing that is still a possibility for us all to be together again in person one more time. There is nothing that can be done about the lost time and memories, but I hope that my class can still get to walk across the stage together. We worked so hard to get where we are and become who we are today. Most of us should have been, our favorite high school memories are things we will never get to experience. That is why I wanted to express how important it is to me and five hundred and fifty of my peers that we don't lose the one final thing we still have hope about. We don't mind waiting, especially because of all of the summer semesters for colleges have been canceled, but please do not forget about us. We want to graduate in person and together. We want to have this one event to celebrate face to face. I understand that organizations like the CDC have final say in this, but I immensely appreciate everything you are doing to try to get us the non-virtual goodbyes and congratulations that we deserve. Myself and so many others in this community would love to do anything we can to make this possible. Therefore, if there's anything I can personally do to help us have a graduation, I will be eager to do so. Thank you for your time and everything you, you do for students like me. Hayden Henke.
I am asking the school board to act tonight and hold the superintendent accountable for his actions. Over the last month, the school district has put out atrocious communication and has truly missed the mark on being inclusive and involving the community. It is clear that the Lee County School District lacks the leadership to act in the best interest of students and the community. After the scheduling debacle, I truly hope this board would hold the superintendent accountable, but no action was taken. But action was, but action, but not, no, not action was taken, sorry. After many of you stated that the superintendent's lack of communication was concerning to you at the last meeting, just days later, he created another big mess. When nearly two hundred emails from upset parents and students come to you, how do you justify not holding him accountable? Board across America are acting on behalf of their students and providing alternative graduation plans. Over two thousand Lee County students and parents have signed petitions stating they do not want a virtual ceremony, yet the district has failed to acknowledge the petition. A survey was sent out that failed to ask even, to ask if we even wanted a virtual ceremony. The question asked on the survey was, every graduating senior's name and photo will be included in the virtual graduation ceremony. Are you interested in providing additional information such as plans after high school, special honors, et cetera? This question was very frustrating to read and upset many people. Capitalize. We should have been asked. Capitalize. Do you want a virtual ceremony? Yes or no? Uncapitalized. Let me ask you, what is really being considered to pay sixty thousand for a virtual ceremony and capitalized not, uncapitalized, mention this class's accomplishments? Simply horrible that this question would even be posed. To date, the superintendent has capitalized sought, uncapitalized, no input other than the bad survey. While many of you suggested he reach out to high school student governments and student advisory, why he has not complied? Capitalize. You must hold him accountable, uncapitalized, for his poor leadership and lack of planning. I understand that three of you voted to discuss his recent evaluation, but therefore refused. How four of you fail to see the issues with this performance, lack of communication, and deliberate refusal to involve the community? Please release his evaluations to the public and discuss them. Our tax dollars pay him. How can public trust, how can the public trust you if you refuse to hold your employee accountable? Some of you have made recent statements that your role is to observe the district from a bird's eye view. You are greatly mistaken. Thank you. We are parents of a capitalized, Fort Myers High School senior, uncapitalized, set to graduate in the coming weeks. We are frustrated at the lack of transparency around alternate graduation plans. Virtual graduation is capitalized not, uncap, an acceptable substitute. And while the district has stated both a virtual and in-person graduation are being planned, details have not been shared as many of the surrounding counties have done so in the state. Some parents have been informed individually about the dates that were supposed to have been shared with, capitalized everyone, uncap. When the survey came out, but they, capitalized, never, uncap, were. We are capitalized insistent, uncap, that an in-person graduation ceremony happened for every Lee County High School graduating class of 2020. We must know the actual dates and locations, and that information needs to be published and capitalized communicated ASAP, uncap. It is imperative that if the board and superintendent truly want these plans for these students and are actually making these plans, that they share details with the families and graduates. Simply stating they want it for the kids isn't enough. They need to put action to their words. Our students deserve more than empty promises of wanting to do the right thing. The lack of transparency is frustrating. The governor's safe smart step-by-step plan for Florida's recovery states that social gatherings can take place with appropriate social distancing considerations. Alternate graduations in either large venue arenas like Hertz, FSW arena can allow for this. Outdoor football fields can also provide this opportunity. Do not insult the class of 2020 by saying they cannot be disciplined enough to comply with social distancing rules. As one board member has commented, for this is one of the most important days in their lives. Capitalize. All options need to be exhausted. Uncapitalized. If a large venue arena or outdoor field is selected and limits are placed on guests, trust that your students and parents capitalized can, uncap, and capitalized will, uncap, comply appropriately. Other districts across the state have publicly stated their plans for in-person graduations. Dates, times, and locations have been communicated to parents. Backup plans to the backup plan have been published, assuring that they capitalized will, uncap, give the ceremony and are making capitalized all, uncap, efforts. Each of these districts have noted that graduations will comply with the current state, federal, and CDC guidelines in their execution. Why is Lee County capitalized not, uncap, doing the same? How will this district look when in-person graduations continue through the summer and our kids in Lee County tuck away their video memories with, without a traditional ceremony?
I would like to know what plans are being made for reopening schools in August in light of the strong possibility that cases of COVID-19 will still be prevalent in our community and may even worsen into the fall. Will social distancing measures be practiced in schools? How would that look? Can we still safely have crowded classrooms, hallways, bathrooms, and cafeterias? Kathy Edwards.
My name is Gabriela Perez. I'm eighteen years old and currently studying at St. John's University. I would like to comment on your public records workshop held yesterday. If citizens are denied the opportunity to request or inquire about actions that government and public officials are taking, then respectively, the citizens are being denied their right to public knowledge.
that government and public officials are taking, then respectively, the citizens are being denied their right to public knowledge. In accordance of the Florida Sunshine Law, series of laws have been designed to guarantee that the public has access to the public records of government bodies in Florida. The community has the authority to know what conducts and proceedings are being made to determine if these acts will beneficial or detrimental. Any public institution that fights its citizens, attempts to deny them their basic rights of obtaining knowledge, and then demonizes them in order to protect their illicit actions, exerts a very controlled restrictive power. Any public establishment that attempts to do this is denying the public their right to transparency and accountability from their government. From viewing the expressions Mr. Williams and Mr. Atkins made, it is obvious to viewers that they are disgruntled by the various questions posed to allow the public the right to understa, to understanding of what affairs are being made in Lee County School District. It is quite obvious, those who discourage and frown upon public records requesters are those who have something to hide. As a public servant, you must uphold the rules that are in place to protect the community of which you serve. Gabriella Perez. To whom it may concern, my name, and I apologize if I mispronounced, my name is Kieta Perez, and I am a citizen of Lee County. Additionally, I am a former student of Lee County School System. I would like to speak to the comments made by Mr. Atkins and Mr. Williams during the public records workshop on May 4, 2020. During the workshop, Mr. Atkins specifically commented that some public record requests made by members of the public are frivolous and a waste of time. Florida Sunshine laws have been implemented in the state of Florida to ensure the public is entitled to transparency from governing bodies. Therefore, the Lee County School Board is held to these laws and have staff at hand to specifically process these requests, which are funded by taxpayers. For the superintendent of the Lee County School Board to make such disparaging comments is to discourage advocates and other members of the community from partaking in this legislative right. I find this behavior disheartening and irresponsible, especially to come from the face of the school board. Good afternoon. I would like to make the public aware of information not mentioned in yesterday's workshop of the Communication Department and their Public Records section. There are 12 employees plus two interns in the department, not one, as the district claimed. The district does not have a public relations department. The district does have, the district does have two employees assigned to deal with public records requests. The department has more than doubled in the past five years. The budget for communication in total is approximately over $1 million. The presentation states that 50% of public records requests are completed within the month they are received. That really doesn't tell us a lot. That could mean anywhere from 1 to 31 days. Days to complete the records request. Record requests shouldn't take that long to complete. The district is not required to create documents to respond to a public records request. Public records are those records that are already created. If the documents are created, they should be available at any time and should not take an exorbitant amount of time to complete a records request. The only time I can see where it would take a little longer to complete a public records request is if the request is for employee or student records, which would need to be redacted. The district has a history and culture of deception and cover-ups. The public has good cause to not trust the superintendent as he has been behind many of the dark marks on the district. His rhetoric and false propaganda is to sway public opinion. But who can feel sorry for a superintendent who makes more than $310,000 a year, manages a budget of almost $1.6 billion, and consistently is found to have mismanaged and misappropriated money by the Florida State Auditor? Good afternoon. In 2015 and 2017, my niece triumphed in an OCR federal complaint against the district and Dr. and Greg Atkins. In reaching a determination, the OCR reviewed and analyzed documents relevant to the complaint issues interviewed by my niece and district personnel. The Federal Office of Civil Rights evaluated the evidence obtained during the investigation and, under a preponderance of the evidence, determined the greater weight of the evidence was sufficient to support a conclusion that a recipient such as the district failed to comply with the law or regulation enforced by the OCR. Based on a thorough review of the evidence gathered during the OCR investigation, the evidence supported a finding that the district failed to comply with Section 504 and Title II by refusing to provide my niece with a complete copy of her academic file and refusal to remove a code that identified my niece, who was an honorable student, as a dropout. The OCR found that the district failed to adequately investigate and respond to the bullying against my niece, who has a disability, and retaliated against her for filing a complaint. The type of individual that would do this to a disabled child, a victim of an assault and bullying, is someone who shouldn't be around children. This type of person has no moral compass and finds lying part of their normal everyday life. They usually excel as CEOs of big companies and have personality traits of being heartless, cruel, and without remorse. For a school district, this description fits your superintendent. This should not be the type of person you should employ to run your district. The responsibility of overseeing the well-being and education of children and the equity of all employees is at risk. At yesterday's meeting, his annoyance with the board and his arrogance in publicly stating he didn't need board approval or votes clearly shows how he feels about the board and the public. Whether his upbringing made him this way or his exposure to power did it, does not make a difference. This is not who should be running a school district. So when he questions the integrity of others, remember that this is the person that ordered the bullying of a child that suffers from a life-threatening disability and then intentionally hid her academic records while her parents requested over and over again for their daughter's records. They were never given her records, and Atkins was found guilty for doing this. Elections bring consequences. Sincerely, Omar Velauba. Why would the board chair allow the superintendent to perform a survey of four of seven board members whom would receive a favorable rating to suppress the review comments of the board and of those of the superintendent? As a public entity, it would be in the best interest to inform the residences of the performance of an employee whose salary and benefits exceed $250,000. What did the superintendent and those board members who agreed with him want to hide from the public? Where is the transparency, accountability, commitment to your sworn oath to your constituents? The lack of fiscal responsibility to use our board attorney to research, this was abysmal when the answer was a simple no. This type of behavior is consistent with the lack of leadership with the board chair and those who blindly support the superintendent without question or challenge. I would implore that you find the courage to represent your constituents instead of your self-interest. The voters will have the last word. Kurt Sheeran. My name is Reese Hall. I'm a senior at Fort Myers High School, and I'm writing to implore the school board to commit to holding a physical graduation for the class of 2020. We have all worked so hard to get to this point, and a virtual graduation is utterly insufficient to commemorate everything we've accomplished. The fact that the FGCU ceremony was hacked only exposes the flaws in the virtual graduation system. Madam Chair, that ends the public comment via email.
Very much, Ms. Bruno, at this time, I will not comment on those. I will go ahead and move on with the agenda and save my comments for the end. Okay, next on the agenda is the approval of action items in the agenda under consent. The documentation for action items listed under consent is made available to board members seven days, seven business days prior to the board meeting. We are expected to review all the material, and we have an opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding the recommendations. Some of these items have been briefed or workshopped with the board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Board members, are there any items which you wish to pull for discussion under the unfinished business tabled items portion of the agenda? Ms. Giovinelli?
I have none.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
I have none, thank you.
Ms. Gittens?
Yes, I have a question. The items that are coming up for good cause, will there be discussion on those two items, like the graduation? Prior to, will they be separated? I'm unsure about.
No.
Basically, I'm saying, and maybe the attorney can answer this, is a vote of yes for this slate of consent items saying that we are voting on those two good cause items as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because I do have an exception to the item on graduations, and I have a motion, and I'm not sure when to do that. Can I do that now? Or are you going to discuss the good cause items?
No, the superintendent provided his explanation, and I accepted them into the consent agenda for good cause, as good cause. So if you would want discussion, you would have to pull them. Ms. Bruno, could you confirm that, that that's correct?
That, that's correct. And I apologize, board members, I'm not able to log in to see what's going on, so I'm just listening. So yes, Madam Chair, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. So then, Ms. Gittens?
Then I would like to pull the item about, the good cause item about graduation.
The E3? Or, oh no, the E4, okay.
It's the good cause that was brought about graduation.
Yes, thank you, okay.
There's still two of them, Madam Chair, that have to do with graduation. Three and four.
Right, yes, I know. One is about the, one is, Ms. Gittens, one is the dates, and one, the one you pulled is the dates, and the other one is the virtual, the contract with the virtual, for the virtual graduations with Hertz Jones.
Probably the virtual, this will fit more with.
So you want to pull E3 then, and not necessarily the dates?
Correct. It all kind of falls in together, but yes.
Thank you, okay. Ms. Vaughn?
I do not.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
No.
And I have none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent action items with the exception of the pulled item E3? So moved. Okay, moved by Ms. Jordan and seconded by Ms. Gittens. Please record your vote. Thank you. Ms. Johnson, can you let me know what the vote is?
Yes, the vote carried 7-0.
Thank you. Motion carries 7-0, and we have one pulled item to discuss. Dr. Atkins, please read your recommendation for the pulled item E3.
Yes, Madam Chair, approval to Peggy Back, Round Rock Independent School District, where the administrative contracted services awarded to Hertz Jones for the period of May 5, 2020 through May 4, 2021, an estimated expenditure of $60,000 with an option to cancel if deemed in the best interest of the district. Approve, authorize, and superintend execute all related documents.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Board members, is there a motion for the pulled item?
So moved.
Is that Ms. Patrica?
Yes, ma'am.
Second.
All right, and seconded by Mrs. Giovinelli, okay. Is there any discussion? Ms. Gittens? Ms. Gittens, please unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
As we've all heard throughout the last few weeks and received emails, et cetera, from parents and students and community members wanting to know what they could do to help make a memorable time for our students. And as we heard from the public comment, kind of cemented that as well, that a large part of our stakeholders feel that they did not get an opportunity to be heard as far as the options that they would like to have. I was approached by a group of approximately 1,600 parents and asked if I would read and make a motion for the action that they would like to take and to bring it before the board. And as I am a representative of the community, I agreed to do that, so I will read their proposal. Graduation comes once in a lifetime for over 6,000 students in Lee County, and the 2020 graduates want a choice that COVID cannot take away from them. They are simply asking the school district and the board of Lee County to approve the use of their high school football field for two hours. We're appealing to the board as the governing body, as the governing body, you are elected, I'm messing up there, body, elected, our elected officials, because of our requests have fallen on deaf ears at the district. We were told our thoughts and desires and opinions would count. They haven't, and they don't. This proposal will allow each high school community to have some part in the making of our memories. In our attempt to make a difference in our graduation memories, we're requesting the following. Number one, the use of high school football field for two hours during the first or second week of June 2020. And notes under that, this timing would allow even those seniors that may be going away the opportunity to participate in the live ceremony. The ceremony will be conducted in close compliance with the CDC guidelines for the first, for the first weeks of June. Number two, requirements of the district, one person to open the gates for two, two to three hours, and two to three hours the previous day to set up. We do not desire access to the main building. However, if possible, we would like to use the restrooms on the football field. With the agreement, the parents will clean up everything after the ceremony. Number three, the day before setup, stage ramp both sides, small platform, if the school has it, or the parents will provide it on their own. The parents will provide plants and tables on the stage and all of the setup. Chairs set up on the field, separate chairs based on CDC recommendations, renting from local vendors, signs for rows, chairs numbered, sound system, rental from vendor. And they have a quote that it would be $1,500, and they are prepared to pay that if necessary. For the chairs and the sound system, they have a, something set up with a local vendor. Number four, the day of the ceremony, setup at 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m., setup wipe-off chairs, setup sound system, plants, stage, diplomas, et cetera. Chairs put up row signs with numbers, distance chairs based on CDC guidelines. 7:00 a.m., ticket taker, staff volunteers at each gate. Lee County School District, four deputies to assist with crowd if possible. Gates open at 7:30, students and parents, parents based on CDC guidelines, how many guest tickets are issued. Report to the bleachers, recommend masks and social distancing. Graduation reports to the field, they're given their name, card at check-in with a signed row and chair number to keep order of graduates. A 15 ceremony, students stand for prompt and pledge national... 8:15 ceremony, students stand for prompt and pledge national anthem. School staff speak at this time if, if they desire. Diplomas, student photo with principal, grad images or local photographer. All graduates by row diploma and quick photo and backseat. Cap toss, students exit 9:15. Clear the campus according to CDC guidelines and cleanup of field, restrooms, parking area, et cetera. We appreciate you considering this very simple and safe plan to ensure our students have graduation ceremonies for the rest of their lives. In this time of unfortunate circumstances, our students will know that we, the families and the school district of Lee County care and listen to them. The motion is... Sorry, went away. The motion is that the school district of Lee County provide the opportunity for parent, students and community members to use and cooperate with the use of their respective high school football fields during the first and second weeks of June for graduation ceremonies.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Any further discussion, board members? Ms. Giovinelli?
Madam, Madam Chair, there's a motion that's been proposed, I think at this point, we'll look to see if there's a second before we go to discussion.
Well, it's, okay, but we have a motion on the floor for discussion of the, the pulled item. So should...
You need a second.
Yes, we have a second.
Oh, I didn't hear the second, I'm sorry.
No, no, and we don't have a second to Mrs. Gittens yet, but we haven't finished discussion.
I see, so Mrs. Gittens, I think, so just so I'm clear, because again, I can't see what's going on. The motion is, was about, I mean, she pulled the item and so she, she did a discussion and now she's made a motion.
Yes, she has made a motion as part of her discussion, but other board members have not had their opportunity to discuss.
Somebody got a second in, I had a second in.
Yeah, we need, we need to have a second to see if the motion is even going to be able to survive.
Okay, okay, I'm...
A second.
Okay, all right. All right, so then we have a motion and a second by Ms. Vaughn.
And then discussion.
Now we can move to the discussion.
And now we'll move to discussion on Ms. Gittens' motion. Ms. Giovinelli?
Correct.
Ms. Giovinelli, please unmute.
Did, okay. Okay, so did I miss something? What school is wanting to have a graduation if they're on their football field? Was that even mentioned?
There are several and this was, this proposal was put together basically for the students of Riverdale, but there are other high schools that would like to do the same thing and they wanted to piggyback on this opportunity if it is the board decides.
Okay, so my comment to this is, we kind of missed the mark with the survey because I had a lot of complaints about the survey, like immediately, because they weren't even given the option of one or the other, it was automatically given that there was going to be a virtual school, virtual graduation. And then was, you know, was there going to be a, you know, the ceremony as well down the road? And so that kind of, like I said, we missed the mark and we weren't real sensitive to with the survey and allowing for them to even like comment, would there be a preference even? So I think that's resulted in this. I, my concern was what high school, because I see this opening up to be in the many high schools, then what does that say? What happens to the Herbst and FSW graduations and what does that mean? So I, 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 first of all, I love the high, the high school football graduation ceremony being there at each school, but it wasn't my survey, it wasn't my vote, I'm not a graduate, I'm gonna be an attendee. So I, I, I don't think that my, my opinion mattered. So I think that, I mean, part of me wants to say, what other schools would really want this over the other? Because I don't think that was, they didn't have opportunity to really say if they had one, a choice of one or the other. Now we're going to have a virtual school, we're going to have, I mean, a virtual school, let's be, a virtual graduation, a possibility of a graduation on their high school football field and then a graduation at a, you know, a venue. So I think, we can't do all, I mean, do we do all? I mean, so that's, I'm, I, I'm open, but I think we're, we're not allowing for opportunity for stakeholders buy-in or take or opinion and therefore...
Madam Chair, could I provide a little information for everybody? I would be concerned for us to put a motion out there without all the information on the table. And I want to make sure all board members are aware. You know, we do, Ms. Gittens, we do have, in fact, you know, with the consent agenda, we did approve dates for Hurst and Suncoast Arena, so now we have the opportunity to put that out there to our public and we've reserved those dates, those dates are, are in July, starting with the 17th, clear to July 26th. And, you know, so I think that that at least affords us some possibility that we'll have, see some loosening of the CDC guidelines and we'll be able to hold these large in-person graduations at our arena. And 73% of those that responded to the survey said that they would prefer these arenas over the other options that we had. To respond to the concern about the virtual, the reason for that is quite simply, we, we just feel that it's important regardless of what happens to do a virtual ceremony because there are students that will be leaving, you know, in the course of the summer, whether it's military, whether it's college. And so at least we, we have this opportunity for recognition for all of our high school seniors. And if so, if there's many of them that might not be around in late July, at least they've had this, this opportunity to have a virtual graduation, which is very consistent with what we see with other school districts. They were asked about the, the football fields, but again, the large venues were a preference. I do know that some of our principals expressed concerns about the football fields. So having said that though, we still felt that was an option for our, our seniors to participate, or our parents to participate in and, and they did respond back accordingly. And we think that right now, our plans are consistent in that they allow for recognition for all of our students through virtual early this year and then hopefully we'll see CDC guidelines loosen up and toward the latter portion of July, we'll be able to have in-person graduations at our traditional arenas. Only 20% of our student surveys wanted the outdoor venue.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Okay, next, I have Ms. Vaughn, then Ms. Patrica, then Ms. Gittens. Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, and Dr. Atkins, the information that you provided is one of the things I was going to ask about. Frankly, in my, my opinion is none of the, none of the, of I since we're spending the money on, on the virtual, I would have seriously looked at just going with the high school football fields, just kind of a, an old, old fashioned or maybe how some of us graduated from high school. And had we done that, we could have, depending on what it looks like early June, we could have tentatively scheduled. But again, there, there's, there's no way, I, I think probably what was decided on to lock in the large venues at the end is, is probably going to be the best for everyone in that I don't know how much people are traveling, maybe people will be traveling by July, mid to late July. I mean, there's, there's no... We, we just don't know, we don't, we don't know if opening is going to cause a second wave. The only advantage I see with football fields is that they're our fields. You know, we could tentatively schedule dates and say, we're doing it 15 and, you know, the, the different dates in mid-June. And then if that doesn't work out, have an alternate set for July and maybe, you know, we wouldn't be tying up arenas and, and spending that kind of money. But on the other hand, the problem with that is people traveling. And, and so that's going to inconvenience, it's kind of like what's the best choice? And I think probably what was decided on because of the survey and because of what the kids and their parents voted on is really the best choice, although I do like the football field thing. That's my opinion on it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Patrica?
I'm not really clear on the process that we're going through right now. I, I, I don't know that you can have a motion on the table and then make another motion without either laying the first motion on the table or amending the first motion. I'm, I'm not, I don't even know what we're doing right now. So if we could get some guidance on that, I would appreciate that.
So, this is Kathy, so my understanding is that the motion for adopting the consent items was properly conducted and, and a vote was taken. An item was pulled from the agenda by Ms. Gittens and she explained why she pulled it and then she made a motion. The motion was then seconded, seconded by Ms. Vaughn.
I had already made...
And then now there's a discussion.
I had already made the motion.
I didn't hear.
I had already made the motion to support the superintendent's recommendation and that was seconded.
The superintendent's recommendation with regards to, because I may have missed that then. What did you make your motion on?
The superintendent read his recommendation for the virtual graduation, I made that motion. It was seconded and then Ms. Gittens made comments and a motion, but you can't have a second motion when you already have a motion on the table.
That's correct. So I did not hear your motion and who seconded your motion?
Ms. Giovinelli.
No.
Okay, no, I don't, no.
No, that was not. The motion that was on the floor was to put forward the items of consent, to add that to the consent items. It was not to vote on yes on those two good, good cause items. It was a vote to say, can we add them to the consent?
Now, we did that in the beginning.
Right, and that's what that was for, to add those to...
So then we adopted the consent items with the exception of the pulled item. Then Dr. Atkins gave us the information about the pulled item.
Can I just say, the reason was a motion and a second.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, for a second. I just want to make sure what has happened, it's difficult for me to follow because I'm on the phone. So I just need procedurally what has happened. It appears that the consent items were voted upon, then Dr. Atkins, and I believe that the chair asked Dr. Atkins to explain the recommendation. I did not hear Ms. Patrica make a motion. Does the board concede that Ms. Patrica had made a motion?
Yes, we have to have a motion in a second before we can have the discussion.
Right, I'm, I'm, I'm the mover, I made the motion. I, I, I'm telling you, that's what I did.
But your motion was to add the two good cause to the agenda?
No, it was not, Ms. Gittens. My motion was to pass the superintendent's recommendation. I made the motion, I know the content of that motion.
Okay, okay, hold, hold it. Excuse me, excuse me.
Ms. Bruno, please go ahead.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Chair, this is what I need to find out. Did Ms. Patrica make a motion to adopt the recommendation of Dr. Atkins?
Yes.
No. She made a motion, she made a motion for the pulled item. Okay, and that was seconded. And I have an M here, I don't, Ms. Ms. Johnson, do you know who seconded it?
I have that Ms. Patrica made a motion for the pulled item and Mrs. Giovinelli made the second.
That's what I had, okay.
And then Ms. Johnson, can you please tell, excuse me, hold on, hold on one second. Ms. Johnson, can you please tell me what the motion was that Ms. Patrica made?
The motion is for the pulled item, item E3. And it's a good cause recommendation.
No, it wasn't.
So, well, at, I'm, at this point, I think if a motion was made prior to Ms. Gittens speaking, I think we, we need to have a discussion on that motion if it was properly made and it was properly seconded. I did not hear Ms. Patrica's motion. So if that motion pursuant to what our, I'm going to call you a minute taker, Ms. Johnson, is saying, then we need to go back to Ms. Patrica's motion. The other motion that is pending is not proper at this time. So we go back to Ms. Patrica's motion and then we have a discussion on that motion.
That is correct, we need, we need discussion on the relationship. But you're going to have to stick them on the screen.
Okay, and I apologize again, technology is hard sometimes.
Can I just say, excuse me, Ms. Gittens, just one minute, okay? We adopted the consent agenda, then we had one pulled item. I asked for a pulled item. I got a motion from Ms. Patrica and a second from Ms. Giovinelli.
No, you did not, no. It didn't, she, the, Ms. Patrica and the superintendent talked about at the beginning of the meeting, you said there are two good cause items. You asked the superintendent to please discuss those two good cause. Ms. Patrica said she asked to have them added to the consent because they were brought for good cause. It was the question to add those good cause to the consent, this, that's what the vote was for. There were no pulls until I gave a pull for the item that had been added to the consent.
Point of order, I have the, I have the agenda script in front of me and I always take copious notes. So what we did was, we had the approval of the consent action items. I asked for pulls, you had one pull.
Yes.
The motion, excuse me, then we had a motion by Ms. Jordan, seconded by Ms. Giovinelli, to approve the consent action items with the exception of your pull. And the motion carried 7-0. Then I said, we have one pull to address. This was the unfinished business table item. E3. I asked Dr. Atkins to read his recommendation for that pulled item, which he did. Then I said, is there a motion for the pulled item? And it was motioned by Chris and seconded by Melissa. And then I said, is there any discussion?
Which we didn't have.
First person to raise your hand for discussion. Your discussion rendered a motion, but no other board members had an opportunity to discuss the pulled item. And I might, and I'm looking at my parliamentary motions side and I think that, I think that I'm correct and Ms. Bruno, I will defer to you as the legal expert.
If, if the motion was made by Ms. Patrica to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and it was properly seconded.
No, Ms. Bruno, that's not what it was. The motion was made, my, the motion was made usually when we have a pull. It usually is because someone wants to discuss it and maybe not, we not do it or maybe change it in some way. So the motion by Ms. Patrica was just that we can talk about the pulled item E3, which we did not complete doing. Ms. Gittens had discussion, no one else had discussion, we did not vote on that yet.
Okay, so-
And Ms. Gina Nelly is saying she wanted to discuss.
Okay, so-
I actually hadn't finished my-
Okay, so, one, one second then, so I'm clear, Madam Chair. So basically what happened was the item was pulled and Ms. Patrika made a motion to discuss the item that was pulled. Is that correct?
No, that is not correct. I, it's not correct. To adopt the superintendent's recommend, recommendation. It was an action motion. It is the kind of action motion that we make every single time an item is pulled. And then we have discussion and then we vote on it.
I think, I think what I need to be very clear on, because I'm hearing two different things. I'm hearing that there was a motion to basically adopt the recommendation and I'm hearing there was a motion to discuss the item and I need clarity on that.
No, 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 okay, so whenever there's a motion on the floor, we have a motion and a second. Once we have the motion and the second, then we have an opportunity for discussion by all board, all interested board members. So then that was why after I said it had been moved by Chris and seconded by Melissa, is there any discussion? Ms. Gittens started her discussion and it was the proposal for the new motion that she was making. Then no one else, then no one else discussed it and the next thing, we were on to her motion, which now has-
I understand, but-
By Mrs.-
But I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to understand very, I'm just trying to understand very clearly what the motion was that Ms. Patrika made. That's what I need to understand, please.
Okay, well, as the mover, I'm telling you that I moved to adopt the superintendent's recommendation. I, I would also say that there is no such thing as a motion to discuss at an action meeting. The only way you can discuss an item is if you make a motion for action and that is seconded and that is the only time we can have discussion at an action meeting. So, um, a motion to discuss is not something that I'm aware we have ever done.
No, it's not a motion to discuss. It's a motion for the recommend, I said, Dr. Atkins, please read your recommendation for the pulled item. He read it. Then I said, is there a motion for the pulled item? Which is the one he just read the recommendation for, E three. Okay, so we got a motion and a second and then we were to allow discussion like we always do. And Mrs. Gittens, during her discussion, she was the first one to offer discussion and during her discussion, she made another motion.
I, I was, I was the first one that actually spoke. But we didn't have, we didn't have a discussion. Gwen is the one that pulled the item. So we, she, she should have been the one to have the first discussion. So-
She did.
Okay, but then we were still discussing her pulled item. Not, to put it back into the, to recommend, go back to-
Right.
Dr. Atkins.
Still, exactly.
And because otherwise, if that was what I was seconding, then I would not, then I'm going to pull my second back. I'm not going to second that. I was seconding, agreeing to Ms., uh, to Gwen's pull.
But we don't need to agree to Gwen's pull because any board member is able to pull an item. So you misunderstood what the motion was that Ms. Patrika was saying and you're pulling your second back, right?
So you seconded the superintendent's recommendation. Oftentimes that happens because then that allows for discussion.
Right.
And then we vote on it. So we had not had that opportunity to do that yet, to vote on the superintendents. Then, then we had another motion and then, and kind of an offhanded second just to keep that motion, but we, we can't have two motions on the table, so again.
Ms. Fisher, may I, but you, may I please speak? The, the thing is, the, when there was good cause, there were two good cause items. They, they, you asked the superintendent to explain the good cause. And then there was a motion to add that to the agenda consent. That's what it did have to be, because my question to you was- Can I finish, please? My question to you was, if I vote on the consent items as a whole, am I voting on that? And that's when I said I would like to pull. No one else had a pull, anyway.
Uh, Ms. Bruno, just-
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Bruno, just give me one minute to, if, if you would, please just give me one minute to entertain Ms. Morgan. Ms., please unmute. Ms. Morgan, please a minute. Ms. Morgan. Ms. Morgan, please unmute.
May I, may I suggest? Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, now I can hear you.
I, I want to suggest that you call a, a ten-minute, uh, uh-
Yeah, it's recess, yes.
Yes, and, and, and you and Attorney Dupree Bruno discuss if you would like to proceed because this is-
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time-
That was what I was going to suggest.
At this time, please- Yes, we'll have a ten-minute recess, thank you. Ms. Bruno, I'll call you.
The motion for the pull.
Okay, so this is what pursuant to Robert's rules I believe that we need to do at this point. So Dr. Atkins made a recommendation with regards to consent item E3 that was pulled by member Gittens. And that is with regards to a piggyback for, I believe it's the Hurf Jones virtual graduation. Now, at the time, Ms. Fisher, the chair, went ahead and said something along the lines of, "I'll entertain a motion about this recommendation." And member Patrica said, "So moved." And then that was seconded by member Giovinelli. Pursuant to Robert's rules, "So moved" is not an appropriate form to make a motion. We do have to say, "I move that we adopt the recommendation," or "I move that we accept the approval to the piggyback." Something like that to make sure that the motion is properly formed and it's properly recorded. It's my understanding that in the past, that's something that you guys have done. So at this time, I think we're going to go ahead and move forward with Ms. Patrica's motion. But in the future, we're going to refrain, my recommendation is we refrain from using "so moved" and apply Robert's rules explicitly in that the motion must be restated. Now, Ms. Gittens' motion is completely different. Ms. Gittens' motion was about the availability for parents to use a football field. That's actually a separate motion. So I believe that we can move forward with Ms. Patrica's motion, which was properly seconded, and then have the discussion on that. And then you, the board, can move forward with the vote on that particular motion. And then after that discussion, if Ms. Gittens wants to move forward about her motion with the football field, she may do so.
Okay, does everyone stand that? Okay, Ms. Fisher?
Yes, Ms. Jordan.
If, but if Ms. Giovinelli pull back her second, there's no conversation. So we do need a second in order to even have a conversation.
Yes, I'm aware of that.
Right.
And I, Ms. Giovinelli. So I will second it if she is not going to second. Thank you, okay. Ms. Giovinelli?
Miss, Care Fisher, if you can just make sure everybody understands what the motion on the floor at this time is.
I will do that. I just don't see if, I don't see Ms. Giovinelli. And Ms. Patrica, are you back with us?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Giovinelli?
He's connected. Her video is not active.
I don't, does she hear us? Ms. Giovinelli? Oh, okay. Thank you. All right. Okay, I'm going to repeat the motion that's on the floor. Dr. Atkins gave his recommendation for E3, the piggyback with another school district for a contract with Hurf Jones for the virtual graduation ceremony. Ms. Patrica moved to accept that recommendation, and that was seconded by Mrs. Giovinelli. Now, Mrs. Giovinelli, are you rescinding your second?
I will rescind, I will rescind my second, although we should, we could have discussion. I already know where I'm going to go with it, but if we want to keep it, I'll, because somebody else could second it. So it's not going to matter.
Right.
So I'll leave my, I'll leave it here. So let's just get this vote over with so we can move on. So Gwen can present her motion.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Bruno, do you have any other comments before we proceed with discussion?
No, no, Madam Chair.
Thank you, okay. Okay, now, board members, is there any further discussion regarding the acceptance of Dr. Atkins' recommendation for the contract with Hurf Jones? Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, I have my hand up in the participants' room.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Patrica and then Ms. Jordan, yes, go ahead.
I, I want to thank staff for the hard work that they've done in putting this together. I think that the characterization of not reaching out to the community in the beginning was unfair. You know, staff, staff was hearing from districts across the state who were sending out surveys, asking, "Do you want virtual or do you want in-person?" And those districts that were making the decision to go in-person were getting a lot of negative feedback from their constituents. And those that were making the decision to go virtual were getting a lot of negative feedback. So the decision was made in the best interest of all students, and I mean all, because, you know, Dr. Atkins, Dr. Atkins said it, this, we've got kids leaving as soon as their coursework is done. They will have no opportunity for an official recognition of their accomplishments if we don't hold a virtual graduation. And I understand that there's some concern about the way Dr. Atkins talks about this when he says, "Assuming CDC guidelines permit this to occur in July." But that is our reality. I mean, that is the reality of the world we live in today. He, nor I, nor any of us can stand here publicly and promise that there will be an in-person graduation in July because we don't know how this virus is going to unfold. We don't know if there's going to be a second wave. We don't know if it's going to disappear entirely. But what we do know is that the superintendent and staff have put together dates. They have reserved venues, and we will make every effort humanly possible to make sure that in-person graduation occurs. So I'm obviously supporting the motion, but I wanted to offer my appreciation to staff because, you know, these are unprecedented times. These guys are moving fast based on, based on changing information every single day. And this is, this is one of those things. So, thank you. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica. Okay, Ms. Jordan?
I would just like to say I'm in favor of this as well. And I just, I'm glad that we have dates because that was the most important thing for parents and students. I've been speaking to so many people, and, you know, they just didn't want to hear that we are thinking about something. They wanted a hard date. And now that we have that and, you know, and we're speaking about it, and we have already approved that. So I think that, you know, that sounds a lot of pain that people were going through because it was, it was really, they felt so much going on within their families and just making sure that their child was going to have something. So I think that the virtual and, you know, following with, you know, our neighboring counties as well, they're all doing it. And that gives them that extra satisfaction of having that as well. And I just think that we, I personally am going to vote in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now I see, oh, brother, okay. So that Ms. Giovinelli, then Ms. Gittens, then Ms. Vaughn. No, Mrs. Giovinelli, all right, take your little hand off then. Okay. Then Ms. Gittens? Please unmute.
Trying to find my mute button. First off, the comment of Ms. Patrica saying that we based our decision on other counties and districts in the state. All I have to say is we're Lee County, and I'll leave it at that. I would like to ask the superintendent, what was the base number for the data? What was our sample size?
For the survey, we had 2,301 responses.
Okay, thank you. And if possible, sometime can we see the, that data? But my question is also, and I've spoken this to, to you previously and to Ms. Stillwell. We have learned in this epidemic, that this pandemic, that there is a large portion of our stakeholders that we don't reach with emails and surveys. And I mentioned that before you sent out the survey because I feel that we are, that there are a lot of forgotten people that weren't even asked. In one section of the East Zone, there's an area of like 7,000 and some people where 26% to 28% of them do not have connectivity. And we have over 2,000 students in that same area. So my, my thought is, I, I don't know. I think that if anything else, do, offer another survey. There's 6,000 students, so graduates. And it kind of holds true that we heard from, you know, 20% of them. So that is, that's my comment.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Okay, Ms. Vaughn?
I, I think it's so impressive that, that huge group of parents, and you said most of them came from Riverdale, had, they were even willing to pay for the whole, for the whole ceremony. I'm, I'm going to go ahead and support the original recommendation. However, I want to throw something else out there that I, I think would be responsive to how the parents and the students feel. There was that one letter, I don't remember the young lady's name, that when, that was, that was very touching when she said, "I didn't realize that my last day of school before spring break would be my last day ever in, in my school." And, and I think from what I'm hearing, there's also, you know, the pull of the school, of the football field, I, I think is something that it's just, they want to be there one more time. They, they have strong. So I'm putting my brain back a few years here for Lee County. I know since I was a senior advisor and taught seniors forever in Texas, all of our schools in my Texas district had very sweet kind of baccalaureate services. All the schools did that here. I know some of them had rose cutting and they, they had different things. My, my school where I was for 19 years, we did what was called a candlelighting service. So I, I don't know, you know, it's, it's an expense to open school football fields. But on a school-by-school basis, to kind of help that need to get back to the, that, I mean, I'm just throwing it out there. I'm sure people have thought about it before. But to have some kind of an outdoor baccalaureate service, and, and that might, and, and not all the kids would have to participate, just those who want it to. And it would be easy, easy enough to do, especially with the kind of parents you were, you were talking about. And as I said, it's quick and easy, and it would give them one more connection to, to their school. So that might be kind of a, not a compromise, official compromise position. So that might be kind of a, not a compromise, official compromise position, but just something that they might think about, and it may be totally out of the question because of the expense of, or, or the problems of opening football fields, but I think all things considered, and since so much is already in motion, I'm going to support the original recommendation.
Thank you, Mrs. Vaughn. Okay, and now, Ms. Patrica, I see your hand is still up. Is this again, or?
Yeah, I just, just wanted to quickly say that the, the information regarding the survey is, is in our, our board update for last week. So we already have it.
Yes, we do. We have, yes, we do have that. I think Dr. Atkins tried to say that. Okay. All right, so if, if there is no further discussion, oh, Ms. Giovinelli?
So I, I think we just have to be really careful here. We can't, I mean, Ms. Patrica's motion is trying to circumvent Gwen, allowing Gwen to speak for the community that she represents, and I think we have to be very careful with that. The survey was questionable and misleading, and people are upset over the survey. And that's what I was trying to express earlier, that we have to be careful and very sensitive to what, those questions were posed a specific way that they feel that was directing it to go one way. They weren't allowed to comment. I mean, I, my concern is that we allow opportunity for the, we have a petition that had 1,600 people on it. What happened to the petition? We don't even acknowledge the petition at all, which I think is bad on our part as a district and as board members. So, I mean, and I, and I don't believe Ms. Gittens was even against the virtual ceremony at all. That's not what she was trying to do. So I, I'm not opposed to the virtual ceremony. I think that's another option. I just think that, I, I know, I talked, I talked to Dr. Atkins, and he said that the principals wanted it consistent across the, the district. But, you know, we don't always do things consistently, and, and so we need to have flexibility there. I like that word that Ms. Patrica mentioned earlier. We need to have flexibility, and so I would request that maybe another survey go out asking, and just get clarity and maybe more participation. And like, I'm not opposed to the virtual ceremony at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Giovinelli. Dr. Atkins, may I ask you to refresh my memory about the dates of the virtual graduation? I know we got that, but I, I don't recall.
Well, the virtual graduation is going to happen in June, and we will get those dates from HIRF Jones once we have the contract signed.
Thank you, that's what I.
I think Clayton, Mr. Simmons gave you an estimate of when those would be.
Did, yes, thank you. Okay, I appreciate that. Okay, then board members, if there's no further discussion, Ms. Gittens?
And I think Ms. Jordan had her hand up as well. Okay, if she wants to go first, then I can go after her.
Just go ahead, Ms. Gittens and Ms. Jordan.
Right, I, I mean, I just feel that to give the, the community, the parents, an opportunity to feel that they participated in something that is their future is very, very important. The number of students that have even, you know, called or texted or talked to me, they just want to feel that they have a part in the decision. That is all they are asking for, and I think that we can give them that opportunity. I do want to say too, remember, all the parents are asking for is access to the football field and access to the restrooms if possible. Otherwise, they said they would even go so far as to.
Yes, Ms. Gittens, we are having discussion on Dr. Atkins' recommendation for the contract with HIRF. So we're not discussing your motion yet. Do you have a question? Is your motion then exclusive of, is your comment exclusive of the virtual graduation?
The issue with me voting at this point for the virtual with HIRF, HIRF Jones is the parents' statements that, why are we going to pay that amount of money for HIRF Jones when we can do it a whole lot simpler and cheaper? The kids would get something that they want. It's not just one school. It's a couple of schools that would, would ask to do that.
Yes.
And then we have to think about the fact, how many people are going to show up to do the HIRF Jones? Is it worth the 64 whatever that we're spending if they want something else? That's all.
Thank, thank you for that. And then could you submit that petition to the superintendent and his staff and allow the board to see that also?
I won't have to, yes, I will have to get it, I will.
Thank you, okay. Ms. Jordan?
Thank you. The only thing I was going to ask, if Dr. Atkins could just remind us all that the virtual school takes approximately, I think, 30 days to complete. So that's why, I mean, that's really important for us to understand why it's taken so, it's going out till June. Because of the time that it takes to put all that together for each student to, to be put in the proper order and for everybody to do their little speeches.
Right.
So I, I believe that, that is something that we have to be thoughtful of as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote on the superintendent's recommendation to piggyback on the HIRF Jones contract. Okay, so at this time, if you're ready, Ms. Johnson, then please record your vote, board members. Part, it was the poll. It's going to be a variable vote, okay, fine. Ms. Giovinelli? Ms. Giovinelli? Unmute, please. Okay, no, okay. Ms. Patrica?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Gittens?
No.
No. Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
And I, and I will vote yes. So the vote carries five to two. Okay. Thank you. Ms., Ms. Bruno? Do you want to address Ms. Gittens about when she can make her motion again?
I think at this time, because this motion stemmed from the discussion, so at this time she can move with her motion.
Okay, then, Ms. Gittens, would you please repeat your motion?
Okay. The motion was to, that the school district of Lee County provide opportunities for parents, students, and community members to use and cooperate with the use of their respective high school football fields during the first and second week of June for graduation ceremonies. And I will provide the documents that I read to go into the file.
Thank you.
So I, can I just say my concern? So with that last vote, then basically we're saying we're going to do HIRF Jones, we're going to do
Yes.
Jermaine and all of those, and this is just another option for people to opt out of the virtual if they want.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, if, board members, you've heard Ms. Gittens' motion. Do I have a second?
I second it.
And second by Mrs. Giovinelli. Okay, then we'll, any discussion? Okay, then we'll, I'll call for the vote, and again, I will go in order. Ms. Giovinelli?
I'm sorry, I do have discussion. I, I would like to find out Dr. Atkins' feedback. I'd like to determine whether there's any potential additional liability that the, that Attorney Dupree Bruno can address. And, and maybe based on Dr. Atkins' comments, I might ask to table it so that he can get some feedback from his staff. No one was prepared for this. I certainly know I wasn't. I'm not, I, I don't know if Dr. Atkins was. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. Dr. Atkins?
So just my initial response to all of it, just a couple of concerns. One would be, you know, opening up liability, liability, and then of course, your, you know, attorney, Dupree Bruno can comment on that, but, you know, any type of graduation has very staff-intensive, and, and you're talking about opening up a football field and not being staff-intensive, but still incurring an additional cost to the district and to the community. The second, second thing is, you know, you're, I heard discussion about the installation of ramps and these type of things. All of that stuff has to, you know, we have to be very careful when we're putting stages together that would, that safety is a concern. And if you're talking about allowing, you know, community members to do that, I obviously have concerns not knowing a lot about what has, what's in this particular petition, because I have not seen the petition. The, the other thing is, just a concern that our survey did go out, we did have members from every high school that did respond. Now, I think you would, you know that some high schools, like example, Fort Myers High is going to have a higher response rate, but we did have responses from, from all our schools, I believe. And in that survey, the, the on-the-field outside graduation was not the preferred of the two between the arena and the, and the football field. So we have reserved dates for the preferred option for our parents. And finally, you know, I, I, I'll be candid that I do believe that there are, we don't know where we're going to be in July, but believe me, we all want to have an in-person graduation. And so I am very hopeful, and I think that's much more, much more of an opportunity to have an in-person graduation in July with the dates that we've selected than something that's in June. You know, because we're, we're in May right now, and we're just starting to reopen. I don't know where we're going to be in June, but hopefully by the time we get to the midpoint of July, you know, we'll be, you know, able to conduct these things, but we don't know at this point. But I'm very, very hopeful. The last thing I want to say is this, and I, I was going to reserve this for the comments at the end, but it's, it's pertinent, that we also are looking at, similar to what Collier County suggested, even a comeback in December when people come back from college and so forth. And that would be just kind of a get-together for our seniors is something that we are considering if, if, you know, this other stuff is off the table. So again, that's, that's my comments. Number of concerns I would have not knowing all the particulars, and I would, and the very least, need to have time to, to review the recommendation and give you our feedback on it. But that's my initial reaction right now. I see a lot of concerns with this option.
Thank you very much, Dr. Atkins. Okay, so now I have Ms. Jordan?
Thank you. I was wondering about the liability as well, and are the principals on board, the staff board? What happens if it rains? Are they going to redo this the next day? Having the ability to have the audio plus the screen so that it's very visible for everyone? Who controls people coming in and out? If they're taking tickets, who, who polices that? Who's going to say, no, you're not coming in? Who would actually run this event or ceremony? So there are a lot of things that go into any type of event, and yes, I'm an event person, so I, I get all this. And, but there are all of those that, things that have to take place. And, and I appreciate and I respect all the parents, and I would be doing the same thing for my child if they were graduating this, this year, willing to do whatever. But I know, I, we were the last class at Fort Myers High, my daughter was, it rained, and they put everybody in the gymnasium. And those kids felt like they had a half a graduation. They all came back the next day, but they were in their swimsuits underneath their gowns. So I, I think the best for us, because we already have these reserves, is to give them the graduation that they deserve. And that's what we're looking at in going into these venues. Security and having it the way it should be done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jordan. Ms. Giovinelli, then Ms. Gittens, then Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Giovinelli? Ms. Giovinelli?
All right, all right, okay. Can you hear me now? Okay, sorry. Um, I think when you click it, it doesn't always work, but anyways, um, so I would like to see maybe this just tabled to allow just a little bit more time for parents to see the dates of, of the HIRF Arena and FSW, and have an opportunity just to weigh back in, and it would put, I think having the information out there now will put a lot of ease at, for parents. And we just tabled this, and this may resolve itself in the next couple of weeks, and in the next meeting, we discuss it again and bring it back up. And that would just allow for people to weigh in on having it at HIRF and FSW, and, and may not even want the football, but if they still do, then we could get a hear from that. And that would be my suggestion at this point, is motion to table it. Because I think we just need to allow for people to have opportunity, and our stakeholders to know that their voices were heard. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And at this time, Ms. Bruno has a comment regarding liability. Ms. Bruno?
Board members, I don't see this much different than when community members request to use one of the facilities owned by the district. There is a process to rent out a facility. There is insurance requirement when a community member rents out the facility. There's security requirements, so I'm not, there is a process in place to allow community members to access different properties owned by the district. So I'm not seeing this very different from that process.
Thank you very much. Okay, and then I have, all right, Ms. Giovinelli has made, is that a motion to table?
Yes, that was a motion to table. But I think there's other comments after me, so I don't even know how, I don't want to get this convoluted again, so.
Okay, let's, let's go ahead and finish the comments. I have Ms. Gittens and Ms. Vaughn.
Okay, interesting, I have right here on my list before Ms. Dupree Bruno said renting the facility, a note that we rent out our facilities, and the parents had talked about having to get a, an event insurance to cover the event. That was already a discussion. In, in the motion, when it talked about, you know, discussing and, and working with, three words come to mind, you know, have the conversation, listen and communicate. There are things to look at, but it's just like renting out the venue, just, just like we said. And if we don't know who wants to do that, I mean, how many or how many other schools? So all I'm saying is just listen and find out, instead of us just saying, no, we cannot do that, we need to listen.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Gittens. At this time, then, would you like to table your motion so that the groups can contact the district for the process of facility rental and insurance and security, et cetera?
Okay, so I would like to ask Dr. Atkins if he and staff could possibly set up a time to discuss this with a portion of that group to talk about if you still want to do this. These are the parameters. This is the rental agreement. But not to make it, you know, so monumental that they can't overcome it. But not to make it, you know, so monumental that they can't overcome it. But to have that discussion, I think the parents would feel a lot better. The students would, have some students involved, some parents involved and your staff to not just say, we can't do this because of this reason, this and this. But here are the things that you would have to consider. And let's talk about it, let's communicate about it. If it turns out that it's not possible, then that's fine. If, if I say that we table it and it's not going to get pushed under the rug so that we can go ahead and get Herb Jones and come back and say, well, we've already got Herb Jones. And so that's already passed, so why are you going through this? They're going through it because they have a thought and an idea, they want to be heard. So I, I will table it if, with the caveat that the superintendent says we can at least have a conversation with a group of the representatives of that, of the idea.
Dr. Atkins?
Yeah, I don't have any issue with having a discussion with, with a group about, about a particular option or some of the members. I do want to remind everybody that we are not renting our facilities right now because of this safety of our community members. So, and again, we don't know how long that is going to go because we have to see how this unfolds. So right now, it's, it's not an option just because of, of our current CDC guidelines. But again, I don't have any opposition to having a conversation with them. And I also do believe, you know, I heard what Mrs. Giovinelli, I agree, that one of the things that if we get some of these dates out there, so they see that we have concrete plans. This is a board-approved schedule. You just approved a schedule for an in-person graduation at two arenas in the area. I'm hoping that will help to calm things. And then again, you, you also, you know, we're proving this virtual option, so you have that option as well. So our students have at least two, hopefully, opportunities. And I'm, I'm very, very optimistic about July and I want to stay that way. And because I do believe, like you all do, that, that this is what our kids deserve. I mean, the class of 2020 has been through quite a bit as, as all of our employees have and our parents. And, and so, you know, this is, this is something I think would be a nice way to come back and recognize them for a tough year.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Okay. So then, Ms. Gittens, I'll just come back to you one more time. So you want to table this motion or do you want to withdraw the motion? And still have Dr. Atkins have the?
No, I don't want to withdraw it. I will keep pending conversations with the superintendent and staff with a group of individuals that are spearheading this idea.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Bruno?
But Madam Chair, Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Bruno.
So at this point, we need to have the motion properly stated and it will need a second in a vote, in a discussion if there's any in a vote.
Of the table?
So, so someone needs to move that the original motion is tabled with whatever caveat. We need a second so that we can properly record the, the motion and the vote.
So Ms. Giovinelli already motioned to table. And so then, Ms. Gittens, do you want to second it? Yes, okay. And then we'll take a vote and I'll go in order again, Ms. Giovinelli?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, Ms. Patrica?
Nay.
No, Ms. Jordan? Uh, no. All right, now we're, we're voting on a motion to table this motion.
I'm aware.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Gittens?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay. Motion to table. Ms. Gittens, original motion carries five to two. Thank you. Okay, moving right along. At this time, I'm going to recess the regular school board meeting.
Madam Chair, could I just do one thing?
Absolutely.
Just now that we've gone through that, I just wanted to recognize a couple of administrative appointments before we go on to the hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot that.
First of all, you have approved tonight David Salmon, Mirror Lakes Elementary from assistant principal to principal. So I want to thank you for that. And also Tammy LaMester, Three Oaks Elementary is the principal now. And I did have a, a nice conversation with the former principal now and she's absolutely thrilled with this. As are, I know, many of the members of the community, both of these appointments. So thank the board for their support in these two administrative appointments.
Thank you and congratulations to both Mr. Salmon and Ms. LaMester. Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'm going to recess the regular school board meeting and convene the leasing corporation meeting. As president of the county school board leasing corporation, I would like to call this meeting of May 5th, 2022 order. The time is 5:41 PM. The, this afternoon's agenda includes public comment, two secretaries' recommendations, other business and adjournment. Do I hear a motion for adoption of the agenda? Moved by Mrs. Giovinelli and seconded by Mrs. Vaughn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any of you?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries seven to zero. Okay. At this time, we will take public comment. Ms. Dupree Bruno, please address the agenda item of public comment.
Um, first, at this time, Madam Chair, there's no one here for public comment and we have not received anything in the email for public comment.
Thank you. Then, seeing no opportunity for public comment, no one interested in public comment, we'll move forward to secretary's recommendations. We'll now, okay.
So?
Dr. Atkins?
Okay, so first, first recommendation is approval of the minutes for December 10th, 2019. So approval of the minutes of the last Lee County School Board Leasing Corporation meeting held on December 10th, 2019.
Thank you very much, Dr. Atkins. Directors, you've heard the secretary's recommendation to approve the minutes of the last Lee County School Board Leasing Corporation meeting held on December 10th, 2019. I will now entertain a motion to approve the secretary's recommendation. So moved by Ms. Vaughn and seconded by Mrs. Morgan. Is there any discussion on the minutes for the leasing corp meeting? Seeing no discussion, I will now call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, and Ms. Patrica, I didn't hear you.
Yes, ma'am, I said aye.
Thank you, okay. Motion carries seven zero. And now, Dr. Atkins, your second recommendation.
Yes, Madam Chair, the recommended action approval, the resolution optimizing the issuance of certificates of participation, Series 2020A. An aggregate principal amount not to exceed $57,500,000 for the purpose of financing a new middle school MM in Lee High Acres, Florida. Sale thereof in a negotiated public sale, execution and delivery of a Series 2020A ground lease and Schedule 2020A to the master lease and execution of related documents in connection with the issuance of the Series 2020 certificates.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Directors, you've heard the secretary's recommendation to approve the resolution approving the issuance of certificates of participation, Series 2020A. In an aggregate principal amount not to, not to exceed $57,500,000 for the purpose of financing a new middle school MM in Lee High Acres, Florida. And the sale thereof in a negotiated public sale, execution and deliveries of a Series 2020A ground lease and Schedule 2020A to the master lease and execution of related documents in issuance in connection with the issuance of the 2020A certificate. I will now entertain a motion. Moved by Ms. Morgan and seconded by Ms. Giovinelli. Excuse me. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing no discussion, I will now call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Motion carries seven zero. We will now move on to other business. Please note that any comments may be made only in your capacity as directors or officers of the corporation. Mrs. Giovinelli, any comments?
This is strictly to the corporation, right?
Strictly to the leasing?
Yeah, yes, I'm good, thank you.
Ms. Patrica? No, thank you. Ms. Jordan? No, thanks. Ms. Gittens?
No, thank you.
Ms. Vaughn?
No, thanks.
Ms. Morgan?
I have none.
Dr. Atkins?
None.
And I have none. At this point, having no other business to come before this body, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting of the leasing corp. A motion by Mrs. Morgan and a second by Ms. Gittens. I will now call for the vote. Please, all in favor of adjourning this meeting, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Motion carries seven zero. And the, this meeting of the leasing corp is now concluded. And at this time, I'll reconvene the regular school board meeting of May 5th, 2020. Okay, we have no attorney's recommendations, no public hearings. And other business, board members' comments, Ms. Giovinelli?
Okay, hopefully. First of all, happy Cinco de Mayo, so I just wanted to say that really quick. And it was, we've had a, we've been pretty busy the last two days and I appreciate the work that we've, that we've come together and hopefully that, you know, we'll all leave and, and still a great board. So that's my hope. But I did bring up yesterday about the, the emails that, for public comment yesterday. So I, you know, Madam Chair, you know, due to the unusual and urgent circumstances leading to our virtual meetings to ensure that the public has its voice heard and that they have access to the records, I move that all emails submitted for public comment for any past or future virtual board meetings to be accessible to the public via board docs as an accomplishment, accompaniment to the minutes, sorry. So that is my motion. Do I have a second?
Okay, seconded by Ms. Vaughn.
And one other thing I'd like to say really quick too is Mr. Quick had made a motion, made a statement at the last meeting that it would be part of the record and therefore I just want to make sure that it is part of the record. And that by doing, making this motion, this would, we would be able to set policy in place for, because who, who's to say that, you know, if we do have another COVID outbreak in six months from now or eight months, that we don't go back to virtual meetings and this will be already covered and we won't have to worry about that. And, and the community will know that their voices will be heard.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Giovinelli. Ms. Bruno, do you have a comment? Thank you.
With regard to the motion?
Yes.
I think the motion is properly raised. We just need to see if there's a second.
Yes, and we have a second by Mrs. Vaughn. So now, any other discussion, board members? All right, I'll call for the vote. Okay, Ms. Giovinelli?
Madam Chair, I have my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Patrica.
I'm just wondering about the broadband here in terms of staff time. Dr. Atkins, if you can address that, is this just a simple addition? Or are we adding hours of work to, to the staff? Or maybe Susan's in a better position to address that, I don't know who.
Yeah, I can, I can get clarification, but I, I do believe if it's just one, like compiled as one electronic record, I don't believe it's going to be difficult to do that.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so?
I would, I'm sorry, I would ask Susan, I know she's on the line to clarify, but that, that's my understanding.
Ms. Fisher, this is Darryl. I wanted to let you know that Mrs. Bruno is disconnected. We're trying to reach her again.
Yes, thank you. Okay, Ms. Johnson?
I'm working with Laura Howard or Webmaster to get a link for the board members to, to be able to view the comments from the last meeting. And I've been in talks with Jennifer Schaefer about getting the board docs. So we're still talking about how that's going to be handled.
Okay, thank you. That's good input. So then, I'll call for the vote now if there is no other discussion. Okay, Ms. Giovinelli?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Patrica?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Ms. Gittens?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
And, and I vote yes also. Okay. Next comments, Ms. Patrica?
I don't think Ms. Giovinelli was done.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Ms. Giovinelli.
So, and I'll?
Ms. Giovinelli, unmute, please.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, and real quick, I just want to thank you, thank you, everybody. It's just important for everybody that went to that trouble to write all those emails, there's 160 of them or whatever, that it's important that they know that it does matter and it's in the record. And I appreciate all the efforts that they made to do that. So I thank everybody for supporting that today. And that's really all I have. Happy Cinco de Mayo and congratulations to the staff that, that, the new APs and so forth. And I look forward to our next meeting. Thank you.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, I'm so sorry, I keep getting disconnected. I'm having a very hard time with, with technology today. I just want to make sure that there's no public comment on that motion. I don't believe anyone is there and I don't think we received an email, but I want to make sure that's on the record.
Okay, thank you.
It's doubtful, just concerned that there's nobody in the audience who has a public comment on that last motion. And I got confirmation that there is and I do not have any emails. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that. Okay, and now, Ms. Giovinelli, you finished? Thank you. Okay, Ms. Patrica?
I'll start my comments with a motion, the FSBA motion. And Susan, I will, I will copy and paste this to you in an email so you don't have to take fast notes. I move that Debbie Jordan be the Lee County slash District 26 representative on the FSBA Board of Directors and that Kathleen Morgan be the Lee County slash District 26 alternate representative on the FSBA Board of Directors.
Thank you. Board, board members, you've heard Ms. Patrica's motion that Debbie Jordan be the- Jordan be the representative, and that Ms. Morgan be the alternate for FSBA Board of Directors. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Okay, any discussion? Ms. Gittens?
Yes, it was very unfortunate yesterday that I got electronically kicked off, and then I was waving my arms to make a comment and a statement, but for some reason, I don't know if I wasn't seen or wasn't recognized, which is why I came to the district office today, so there wouldn't be any issues. I raised my hand because I felt I wanted to put my name forth as the alternate, especially since I, since I didn't do, wasn't elected to the first, and I do not feel that I had an opportunity to even state that or be recognized, and that's why I'm bringing this up now.
Thank you, and I apologize for that, but as I explained to you, your picture was frozen, so I, your motions were not in real time, and I apologize if I missed the opportunity to recognize you.
And I also wanted to ask, didn't, did we look into the fact that if you're running for office, that we talked about yesterday, being appointed to a position that's for a full year, and not knowing how things are going to turn out at the end of the year?
I, I can address that. That, that is not an issue in terms of FSBA policies or bylaws. In fact, I was just named the president-elect, and it is an election year for me.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica. Any other comments? Okay, then I'll call for the vote.
Well, I would like to be considered. I, if you go ahead and vote on this, I was not even given the option to be considered for a position.
Okay, Ms. Giovinelli.
But I would, I would like to remind everybody that the reason why I was alternate is because I believe Pam was the alternate at the time, and they wanted her, you know, the conversation was taking place that, since she was up for reelection at that, to not, you know, that we had to have someone else. So that's how I even became the alternate, which when Ms. Patrica became VP, because she was the FSBA, then the alternate slipped into that spot, and that's, that's why I didn't even go back, you know, go back in for it out of respect for the election. So I think that it is important to acknowledge, you know, now, I mean, it's, I guess it's going to be different every year, so we'll address that in a year from now, then, is what it sounds like. No one's wanting to be supportive of that. So, and Ms. Vaughn had her hand up as well, so.
Yes, I, yes, I know. I was just waiting for you to finish.
Okay.
Yes, Ms. Vaughn?
I was wondering, out of consideration for the fact that Ms. Gittens didn't have a chance yesterday, if perhaps the motion on the floor could be amended, and that, that we vote separately for the, the director, what is the officer, and then the alternate separately, since there are apparently two people that are interested in that.
Yet, the board members, do I have consensus that we do that separately? Okay. Ms. Patrica?
Withdraw my motion. I make a new motion that Debbie Jordan be the Lee County District 26 representative on the FSBA Board of Directors.
Okay, then, board members, all in favor?
No. I second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, it is Cinco de Mayo. There's more to it. I just don't do it every time. Okay. Moved by Ms. Mrs. Patrica and seconded by Mrs. Morgan, Debbie Jordan as the representative. All in favor? Aye.
We have to allow comment, and we have to ask about public comment before we can take a vote.
That's correct.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Patrica.
I'm going to ask to see if there's anybody there who wants to make public comment, and I have not received any emails with regards to this motion.
There is no one in the.
There is no one, there is no one in chambers to make a public comment.
Thank you. Okay, then, board member comments. Ms. Gittens?
Well, do we have to give like five minutes or whatever for people to respond? I mean, I'm just asking.
At this point, there's nobody in the room.
And you have no emails, right? Okay.
I have no emails at this time. If you want to wait five minutes to see if I get any emails on this particular topic, we can.
Okay, Ms. Patrica, we're going to wait five minutes to see if there's any public comment. Is there any other comment from any other board members? Ms. Morgan?
No.
Oh. Okay, Ms. Giovinelli.
No, I have none. I take it back.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan?
I was just going to say that I definitely would like to be the, the director with FSBA. I have been the alternate all year under Ms. Giovinelli, and I have attended the meetings as well as the legislative meeting, so I'm just thanking you all for supporting me, if you do so.
Thank you very much. Okay, then, I'd say I think we have another two minutes. Yet, any other comments? Ms. Patrica, in the meantime, do you have any other comments before we take the final vote on your motion?
Well, as part of my board comments, I was going to congratulate Debbie Jordan, so I guess I'll just make those comments now to save that time later, assuming this motion passes. Ms. Jordan, I think you're going to have a lot of fun with this. There's a leadership conference where you really just jump in with both feet and, and learn a lot about the organization and the future direction of the organization, and I just, I think it's going to be a lot of fun, and I think you're going to do a good job representing Lee County. So thank you for your willingness to serve, and congratulations prematurely.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Now, okay, so we have Ms. Gittens. Are you nominating yourself for director or alternate?
Madam Chair, we have to take the vote before we can move on to the next.
The vote, Ms. Fisher, Madam Chair, it's fine. Go ahead with the vote. The congratulations has already happened anyway, so we need to take the vote for the director, and then we'll move on to whatever with the assistant. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I have two minutes and 38 seconds on my clock in going and counting, and I still have not received any public comment emails on this particular motion.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Ms. Giovinelli. Ms. Giovinelli, please.
Yeah, just, okay, so just for the record, there, in June, we will shift around some of our liaisons, and at that point, there's opportunity that Ms. Jordan's position would change regarding the present, the legislative one. Am I correct? Can we refresh my memory on that? And then, and, and that would maybe allow, I think we need to, my point is to allow for everybody to have a little piece of the, the liaison and action and business, and so we don't want to just give it to one person the entire time. So that's my, that's my comments on that. So I, just if Ms. Patrica can refresh, because I believe.
That is true. Ms. Giovinelli, that is true, and we already, and the FSBA is already working on different types of liaisons. The legislative liaison would not be the, the vote, coming up with different.
Structure.
Different structure. Yeah, so that's, they're working on that right now.
But I thought a legislative liaison was a two-year appointment.
It is, but they, it is, but they are coming up with, under the different new bylaws, they're working on the structures of, I think, like a community person, and I cannot recall at this moment. On that, the advocate.
Advocacy committee.
Correct, which we're, both Ms. Gittens and I are part of. That's correct.
Thank you very much. Ms. Bruno, how are we doing for time?
We're down to 25 seconds, and I do have one comment.
Yes. Please, please read it into the record.
I would like to speak on the issue, and I would like for the pick to be Ms. Gittens. I believe she represents the public better than Mrs. Jordan. I also find it odd that Chris was speaking as she already was voting in prior to the five minutes. I believe she is out of line. She is not being a team player to being treated fairly. Rainey Hall.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bruno.
And that's the only comment I have, Madam Chair.
Okay, and so, and now we're at our five minutes, so we'll take the vote, please. Ms. Giovinelli? Ms. Jordan, representative? I can't hear you, Ms.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Ms. Gittens? Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
And, and I vote yes. Thank you.
I vote yes.
Oh, Ms. Vaughn?
I don't think you got my vote.
I don't think I did, but I got it now. Okay, motion carries seven zero, and thank you, Ms. Jordan, for being willing to serve. Now, to the second part of Ms. Patrica's motion for the alternate.
I move that Kathleen Morgan be the Lee County slash District 26 alternate representative on the FSBA Board of Directors.
Okay, and any other nominations at this time? Okay, Ms. Giovinelli, and then Ms. Gittens?
I am going to nominate Gwen Gittens for alternate, as I did, tried to do that yesterday.
Thank you. Okay, and Ms. Gittens? Okay, thank you. Okay, so at this time, we'll do a show of hands for Ms. Morgan as the alternate. All in favor?
Madam Chair.
All in the motion.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think I have to go ahead and give five minutes for public comment, and at this time, I will caution board members from congratulating anyone until we have the entire process completed. So I'm going to go ahead and start my timer.
Thank you very much. Okay, in the meantime. Well, I thought it was Ms. Vaughn. Did I have that right, Ms. Vaughn? You seconded the motion?
No, I don't.
Yeah, okay. All right, so while, while the clock is moving, Ms. Patrician. Yes. All right, well, wait, wait until we have a second. Ms. Patrica made a motion for, for Ms. Morgan to be the alternate for FSBA. Is there a second? Okay, seconded by Ms. Jordan. And then, Ms. Giovinelli made a motion for Ms. Gittens to be the alternate. Is there a second?
We can't have two motions in the table at once, Madam Chair.
I think that, Madam Chair, I think basically we need to have, we need to have the vote of two nominations, one for Ms. Morgan and one for Ms. Gittens. And I, I think we need to move forward the chair to vote on the nominations. I know that I was waiting for public comments because of the motion, but we don't have the motion just yet. We need to do the nominations first, and then we can have the motion.
Okay. So Ms. Patrica nominated Ms. Morgan to be the alternate for FSBA, and Mrs. Giovinelli nominated Mrs. Gittens to be the alternate. So we have two nominations on the floor. All right, I'm going to ask you, Ms. Bruno, for assistance with this.
Well, I think at this point, we just vote. The members have to vote on the two nominees.
Okay.
So may I suggest that we have a consensus vote on who it should be, and then I can make a motion, and we can have it seconded based on that consensus?
Thank you very much. All right, all in favor of Ms. Morgan being the alternate for FSBA? Please give me a thumbs up.
I have my thumb up.
You have your thumb up? I have my thumb up. Okay. Okay. So by a vote of four to three, by a consensus of four to three, Ms. Morgan is the nominee for alternate to FSBA. So, Ms. Patrica, then, do you have a motion?
I move that Kathleen Morgan be the Lee County slash District 26 alternate representative on the FSBA Board of Directors.
Thank you very much. All right, board members, you've heard Ms. Patrica's motion, that Ms. Morgan be the District 26 representative on the FSBA Board of Directors. On favor?
We, we need to give comment, and we need.
At this point, we need to have the public comment, Madam Chair.
Okay, is there a public comment?
Yes, there is.
Thank you. Would you please get into the record?
Board member Gittens has contributed to the district in many ways. She would be an asset to be, to be elected to the FSBA in any capacity. Jacqueline Perez.
Thank you. Any board member comments? Ms. Vaughn, and then Ms. Gittens? When? When did, when did we, this, you have to wait five, five minutes?
I do, I do have, I do have.
Earlier.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I do have the clock running, so we're at four minutes and 18 seconds going down to, to zero.
Yes, so just, Mr. Prave, could you just clarify, because we had earlier votes where we didn't have to have the five minutes, like the item that we had for a while? What is, just.
I'm sorry, you're breaking up. When there's a, we're clearing up.
Okay. Let me try it again. Can you hear me now?
I'm on, so, so we're supposed to have public comments when we have a motion, and I've been having a little bit of a technical difficulty today, so I'm not hearing everything that's going on. So we're trying to make sure that we get it right, or for as many motions as, as we can get it right for, so we're going to go ahead and wait for the, at least five minutes to get the public to be able to vote. The one motion that I, I actually did not. The one motion that I, I actually did not hear, because I got cut off and was disconnected. I believe that was Ms. Givinelli's motion. When I got back online, I did say that there was nobody in the room, and I had not at that time received any public comments. And then I do believe that Ms. Gittens said, should we wait a little bit with regards to the public comments, just in case somebody wanted to email in. So that's when we went ahead and said that we're going to wait. There's nothing in board policy that specifically directs us to do anything. All of this virtual meeting and emails is, is completely new. So we're trying to do the best we can to abide by the board policies that we do have. I do think it's probably a good idea to just give the public some time to be able to make any comments that they want. That's why we're doing the, the, the five minutes. If that answers the question.
Yeah, and that, that does. So I just want a further clarification. So does that mean moving forward anytime we're doing a virtual meeting, and we come up with a situation similar to this? We're going to just say, there's going to be a five-minute time? Is it?
That, that would be my recommendation, because our board policy does allow for public comments during motions.
Okay, well, I mean. Works for me. I just wanted clarification to see if that's how we're going to operate moving forward. Now, situations. Okay. Thank you very much. Any other, Ms. Gittens, then, Ms. Jordan?
Yes, my comment is that as we move forward as a governance team, and in attempts to. I guess, show equity and inclusion, that we tend to always kind of go one direction. And I would hope that we would in future. I guess, be open-minded to understand, to allow other people that have not done certain things, or done certain positions, or done things, not just with FSBA, but in general, to broaden their aspects as well. If we continuously just have a few people that are allowed to do all of the things, then we don't grow as a governance team, because there's only a certain portion that get opportunities. And congratulations to Ms. Jordan and Ms. Morgan.
Thank you, Mrs. Gittens. Okay, Ms. Jordan.
Well, Madam Chair, I have one more comment. Please pick Ms. Gittens. She is devoted to the community. Why did you allow Chris to congratulate Mrs. Jordan? Prior to the vote, that behavior is intimidating and should not be committed. The nomination and vote should be recalled. Rainey Hall. The time, the five minutes is up, and I have no further public comment.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bruno. Okay. At this point, seeing no other. wishes for discussion, I will call for the vote. Okay, Ms. Givinelli? Ms. Givinelli, unmute.
And this, this vote is for Ms. Morgan?
This is, this vote is for Ms. Morgan to be the, the alternate rep for District 26 Board of Directors, FSBA.
Okay, I'm going to vote yes.
Okay, Ms. Patrica.
Aye.
Ms. Jordan? Oh, sorry, yes. Okay, Ms., Ms. Gittens? Okay, and Ms. Vaughn? Are we, we're doing consensus or vote? We're doing a vote.
We're doing a vote, no.
Yes.
No.
Okay. Ms. Gittens, I'm going to ask you for another vote, because. Okay. Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'll say yes. So the motion carries five to two. Thank you for being willing to serve, Mrs. Morgan.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Patrica, do you have any other comments?
I do. Trying to switch gears here. The National Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association, certified both Justin Bud Meyer, and I probably said his name correctly, incorrectly, from Riverdale High School, and Gary White from Estero High School, as certified athletic administrators. These guys had to put a ton of work into getting this certification. It is. It is a prestigious certification. Mr. Bud Meyer at Riverdale is a rock star. He is so, so, so smart. Every time I have a conversation with him, and I frequently get to do that at the state championship series through FHSAA, every time I have a conversation with him, I walk away smarter as a result of that conversation. He's incredibly dedicated. And Mr. White is, like, lives at Estero High School. He, he lives there. His kids live there with him. I know that he has some kids who are students there, at least one daughter who's a student there, but he, he really, really, really pours. It, it's a whole family commitment for the whites, let's put it that way. In terms of Tammy Lee Master, yay. I'm really excited for her. I'm really excited for that community. Our community loves her. And Jordi Moorhead is going to be so missed, so very, very missed. She was such a dynamic leader. She has earned every single second of her retirement. In terms of events that I've attended since our last meeting, I had the Family Initiative Autism Awareness Day that was held via Zoom meeting. Now, this is an event that they had planned for months and months and months to be in-person, and I've been to their in-person events before, and they're fun and interactive and snow cones and that kind of stuff. And these guys did it via Zoom meeting. And I didn't, I don't know how much time you guys have spent on Zoom meetings other than these, but you can actually break out into separate rooms. And that's what they did. They broke the kids out into separate rooms, and we did TikTok videos. They had to guess items in a bag. They did superhero training. They taught us how to draw animals. They did Boss Says, which I grew up with Simon Says. And then we did some dancing. I'm really glad it's, it's not recorded, because I, I don't want you guys to see me doing any of those things. The Estero Council Meeting, you guys, we discussed that yesterday. You now know that I went. I will, I will make a greater effort in the future to let you know prospectively when I'm doing things like that. I'm, I'm more accustomed to making retrospective reports to the board. I did attend a national school board member meeting of sorts, and hearing from school board members across the country about the issues that they're facing was comforting in a way and distressing in another way, because everybody's dealing with the same issues. I really, really, really wish right now that my camera was working so that I could look into the camera and tell high school principals how very much I appreciate all of the work that they have put up, put into coming up with good recommendations for both the schedule changes and the graduation ceremonies. I want them to know that I hear them and that I appreciate them. And finally, I am disappointed with both yesterday and today that we veered from our board, board protocols. In terms of a future board workshop for board training, Madam Chair, I'd like the following topics to be included. Is there a way for us to be prepared with the information provided to us in advance of meetings? Meaning, making sure that, that we are, we are all actually consuming the information the superintendent and staff are providing to us in advance of those meetings? And also, how can we work to be more efficient in our meetings? Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Ms. Jordan?
Thank you, and thank you all very much. I will definitely do you proud and represent Lee County at the FSBA. Also, I'd like to congratulate the, the new incoming principals. I'm sure that the schools are excited. It seemed like the, they were prepared for these teachers to be there, or these principals, excuse me. I attended the Lee Digital, which was virtual, and that was very, very nice, how the students were, students' hard work was shown, and we're still able to see the work that is being done. Unfortunately, we were not able to do the film one this year, which was unfortunate, because I know that a lot of the students had worked really hard on that one as well. And then I'd like to say congratulations to our, our students who received the, their, or Grow Your Own scholarships. I watched that as well, how, when they were presented those scholarships, and the reaction on those, those students were just amazing. And just to know that they're going to be coming in to, after they're finished school, they're going to be teaching our students. So I'm really excited for them. And their parents were there, and they were really happy. And I just want to thank Ms. Hall for calling in and making sure she. gave her comments. I appreciate that. Appreciate always hearing from the outside and what they have to say. And I do work very hard for this all of Lee County, and I will always continue to do so. And I have nothing further to say. I'm just really excited that we have dates now, that we can tell all the parents, and the students and the parents can be prepared now for their graduation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jordan. Ms. Gittens?
Alright, thank you. Couple happy things. We had a census parade, and we had close to 30 vehicles in our census parade. We had lots of media coverage for it. I really wish we could have had at least one school bus, because it was in an area where we have over 2,000 students, and they are many of the students that we aren't able to reach. I want to congratulate the teachers this week for Teachers Appreciation Week. And I mainly want to congratulate, congratulate our Golden Apple teachers. I know they had the program, and it was televised and all, but I'm sure that you understand how our seniors feel not having the, the one, the fancy dress up and to be able to have everybody there congratulating you. But we do, and we appreciate you. And I would ask that you would keep us posted on some of the things that you're doing post becoming a Golden Apple teacher. Some of them were, were kind of like, like me, mostly the bridesmaid and never the bride, but some of you finally got to be the bride this time. So congratulations. I think that we are, we're in uncharted territory with our digital meetings. And I think that one of the workshop items could be, because we have no idea how long this will continue, but we need to have some workshopping on the, the protocol and the etiquette and that type of thing for digital meetings and this virtual life that we find ourselves in. Even now, even with the difficulty with the digital, I have been, how can I say this? Cut off, and words put in my mouth, and, and things said that I did this, or I said this this way quite a few times, and I feel that I do need to say something about it. Yesterday, when I was making my comments about the meeting, and, and I was reading my comments, I was not allowed the opportunity to continue to finish my statement. It was relevant to what I had said. And we have to be aware, there is a policy 105 that states that board members, even if you disagree with something another board member is saying, they have the right and the ability to say it. So therefore, I am going to read what I was trying to say yesterday and to allow you to understand what I was saying. Okay, my remarks are about the Village of Estero Virtual Workshop, and I'll condense it of April 22nd, and the guest presenter was our fellow member, Chris Patrica. My comments are not an attempt to defame or discredit, but to ensure transparency and to ask questions that must be asked on behalf of stakeholders. Ms. Patrica was involved in an MOU, and, but I am requesting an update on that MOU. Where is it? How, how is it going? What, we don't hear about an update for it. However, her role changed from being one of seven and, you know, representing us, I guess, on their, the committee, to being negotiator and, and broker for the situation with the schools and everything in, in Estero. During the Village of Estero Workshop, Ms. Patrica encouraged the council to make a definitive decision for the location of New Public and Middle Elementary School. Council members stated the superintendent had promised that the site would be Williams. After a consensus, because Ms. Patrica expressed the following concerns. Yes, I can respond to that, Council Bados, without unanimous approval. We'd have to go with our third option, which is to look further east on Corkscrew. And by the way, this is the third and least attractive option to the school district. Now note that each time I say that, to me, that is defining that you are representing yourself as a representative of the school board. At one point, Ms. Patrica did say, I'm here today to ask you to provide us direction. We were talking yesterday about Three Oaks, but there was a comment made that, and I quote, "We do have a concern about ingress and egress at Three Oaks property." And Steve and I talked about this yesterday. So I don't know if we had that information when we were talking about the Three Oaks property. Another quote is, "District staff has been working in terms of coming up with plans for the location of the middle and elementary schools in the village. Many, many different iterations of the plans have been presented to the school district, and we have done everything within our power or ability, should I say, to accommodate your requests." The problem here is not so much that as a citizen of the village that Ms. Patrica is involved in her hometown area. The problem is representing as being a representative of the board, and we have policies and procedures that prohibit that. What I was attempting to say yesterday, it is a pattern for her to do this in doing things that the board has not given consent. We have not discussed. And it's interesting that at times. Things go the other way, that if someone says something, well, the board has not decided. The board has not stated, the board has not decided. And yet, there were several in the times with watermarking, with filing complaints, and.
Mrs. Gittens. Okay, please. I'm going to call point of order.
I am not, you stopped me at the same place yesterday. Can I please finish?
Ms. Gittens, Ms. Gittens. This is not a forum for attacking other board members.
I am not attacking. Will you please let me finish?
Ms. Gittens.
I will get, the point is right here. My point is this. Representing the board in business negotiations as a voting member without the board's knowledge, first of all, to me, is a conflict of interest. If you are negotiating deals and then you're voting on the deal, that's a conflict of interest with ongoing plans. Here is the concern. Policy 103 is the, the school board acts collectively, not individually. 106, decisions are collective, not individual. I believe that in this situation, that Ms. Patrica has a choice, that if she wants to be on that board and to do that, then she should recuse herself from voting on those same items. I also am suggesting, we have what is called the site, the site selection committee, which is made up of a group of citizens, some from different advocacy, advocacy groups that, that are the board advocacy. And I believe that in future, we need to look at growing and expanding from where we've been forever. And the only way you expand and grow is through change. So if we had this committee that has a plethora of people from different aspects of the community making these decisions, then we wouldn't be in this situation. And that is what I was trying to say. I'm not attacking anyone. I was making my point as to why I think it was inappropriate, and still remains inappropriate, for a board member to represent the district and the board. Now, my last thing that I have to say is. I was not elected to rubber stamp everything. At least, that was my opinion. At least, that was my opinion when I was elected, and that's not who I am. It's not how I'm made up. I chose to run to represent every child and stakeholder in Lee County fairly and equitably. I have a different outlook at this point on my position lately because of how things go. I'm not out to win. This is not a competition because we're not competing against each other or against a child or whatever. This is a race together. It's not a race as a competition. But my new awareness that I've created says that I'm not trying to win, but I am trying to ensure that everyone is held to policies that, you know, we have set, and if those policies are wrong, we need to change them. And I also feel that I am here to create awareness. It may be in two and a half years when I'm done with this job. It may always and every time be a four-three or five, you know, two or whatever, and I may never win a vote, but I will win awareness in the community of all sides and all aspects of everything that we're discussing. And thank you for allowing me to finish.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Gittens. Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, well, I guess I'll start with, I share Ms. Gittens' concern, and I would say about Policies 1.03 and 1.05. And I suggest that if we're talking about things that we need to add to our training, our board training, I would say it is those two items. I'm not going to, I have a lot of the same comments that Ms. Gittens has, and so I'm not going to repeat those. But it surely sounded to me that Ms. Patrica at that meeting was representing the school district. And I appreciated what Chair Fisher said because she's been involved with coral events quite frequently, government meetings, that sort of thing. And she mentioned that she very, very clearly indicates that she's there as an individual with expertise on the school district. So I really think that we need we need to make sure that we get it straight on how we present ourselves. And I would say even at, you know, I know political meetings, League of Women Vote, well, yeah, League of Women Voters, any of those political leaning groups that we're asked to speak at, that we make it clear every single time that we are there as an individual and to say that the board only has authority when it's all seven of us voting. So that's something that I would put out there. Now, on a happier note, it is Teacher Appreciation Week, and, you know, thirty-eight years in the classroom. I'm still a teacher at heart, and teachers are my heart. And today is actually Teacher Appreciation Day. And what better day to have it than Seco de Mayo and all of those specials at the Mexican restaurants? I wish for some of my really close friends that are at several of the different high schools in this location and in memory of all of us, all my Texas friends that we talked together, I raise a glass of lemonade to you on this day, and I can tell you for a fact, having listened to my daughter and a few other people, that if ever you were appreciated, it is this year with the harried moms and dads that are seeing what you see every single day in the classroom. So happy, happy Teacher Appreciation Week. And I know this is really trying circumstances. I can't even imagine. You know, as I've said before, I taught seniors just not being able to see, though they drove me nuts sometimes, but not being able to see my kids having a school year end and not having that face-to-face and, you know, the end-of-the-year hugs. And even some of them that walk out and they're like, glad that one's over. But anyway, that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you. That was very nice, Mrs. Vaughn. Ms. Morgan?
Okay, I just want to make a statement. It's a little long. Bear with me. I want to thank staff throughout the district at all levels. You are tasked with an enormous challenge, planning for a short term without knowing how much money you will have, when you will start, who and what students will be at the gate, and how much autonomy you have as you try to reboot. You know our students and their needs, playing three-dimensional chess. You're being asked to develop a multitude of scenarios with the resources we have in hand, our program, and our beliefs about how best to help our students learn and grow. As you move forward gingerly along this untried path, you will take risks, make mistakes, learn and grow. As you do so, you will be challenged and criticized by those who think they know more than you and have a better plan. If you would just do what they ask, our job is to listen. You are an incredibly talented leadership team with deep, broad, and committed pool of talent at every level of the district. I have absolute confidence that every member of this district is dedicated to providing each child with the best possible educational opportunity you can provide. After Irma, you were celebrated for your leadership, providing safe and secure havens for community members. Again, you have been called to provide leadership, steering students, families, and teachers along a daunting path. As the school district organizes to show how effectively and efficiently high-quality education can be delivered in a different paradigm, you should be proud of your role as first responders. Hang together, stay strong. You are awesome. And thank you to Dr. Atkins for your leadership. You have worked hard to hire and retain an incredibly talented group of leaders. They have collaborated with staff at all levels to respond to extraordinary circumstances. Over the past months, you have been suggested to hostile and undeserved comments, berated for decisions you have made in good faith, having done due diligence and with transparency. I am sorry, members of our community have taken to feeding on their leaders in their frustration over decisions made by you in the unprecedented conditions in which we find ourselves. Leadership and the quality of Lee County School District's response to the pandemic have been recognized by educational leaders throughout the state, by your colleagues, central office, and school leadership. You are deserving of kudos for the professional manner in which you have endured criticism and condemnation. Thank you for your leadership. And those are my comments.
Thank you for that, Mrs. Morgan. You articulated it beautifully, and I have to say ditto. That was part of my comment, but I wanted to say, yes, it's Teacher Appreciation day and week, and we appreciate our teachers. And I'll tell you, the parents out here are appreciating them more than ever. But all of our staff, as you said, has really become community heroes. And I want you to know, I appreciate every one of you from the superintendent and the chiefs all the way down to, and I shouldn't say all the way down, but including all of our bus drivers and food service workers who, we had the opportunity to visit some of them the other day, and I'm telling you, they just have the best positive and self-motivated attitudes. So appreciation to that. In the interest of time, I'm just going to say that I have had an opportunity, even though I've been somewhat off the grid with my broken leg, I have had an opportunity to continue to work on my portion of the strategic plan, which is the health and wellness of students. And May seventh is Mental Health Awareness Day. Our Student Services Team and our Counseling and Mental Health Team with Lori Brooks and Leisha Roy and Sherry, I mean, they have done such an amazing job. And I want to refer you all to our website. Under Student Services, the Mental Health Portal is chock full of amazing activities, ways of supporting kids through this COVID virus, and also helping to provide resources, community resources. There are partnerships alive and well, and I'm just so heartened by the work that's being done and the communication that's taking place. Our social workers and our school counselors have been in constant touch with those kids who were identified by the mental health teams and the school safety teams as having the need. So we continue to operate and do a good job. And I think we need to, this is a time for reflection, and this is a time for us to count our blessings and to lift one another up through this very challenging and uncharted time. And that's all I want to say, is that I appreciate you all. You've been very patient through these meetings, and I really want you to know that I think that we have an amazing potential to be a very good governance team, and we just have to take those next steps. And Ms. Bruno, thank you for volunteering to help us with some of that, some of the policy reviews. So everything that was mentioned by our board members today, we are making plans to workshop that in our master board training and with our meetings with our new board attorney. So thank you very much, and God bless you all. Ms. Bruno?
At this time, I don't have any public, I don't have any comments aside from reminding the public that if they want to send in any comments, to please use the public comment@leeschools.net to submit their comments. If they're submitting them directly to me, please indicate clearly that these are public comments and for what meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Atkins?
Just a few brief comments. Actually, let me get this light. There we go. First of all, I thank you, Jen Schaefer, who helps us through these meetings, along with Susan Johnson. Appreciate it. Give us a heads up that 5:06 through 5:12 is School Nurses Week. So in addition to Teacher Appreciation Week, we also want to recognize our school nurses, which certainly they have been a big help in dealing with this response. Thank you, all board members, for your support of their graduation, the two things that we're doing for graduation and the comments. I do want to, I need your help, though. Please make it, help me make it clear to the constituency. I know that people are concerned that we say things like CDC guidelines and so forth. And I just want to make it clear that I think all of us, and especially our high school principals, are committed to these graduation events, including the in-person graduation. So I don't want anybody to misconstrue what we're saying when we monitor the CDC guidelines. The clear direction here is that you have approved this schedule and that our plan is to move forward with that schedule. And again, I don't want it to be anything that I say take away from that. So I do, again, appreciate your support on the graduation dates. Teacher Appreciation, thank you for the comments around that. I had an opportunity to do a Zoom-bomb meeting today, Diplomat Middle School, just into a math meeting. And was able to congratulate our teachers. They're working real hard and continuing to have virtual meetings in addition to all the things they do for their students. I also got to do a student government one on Monday, which was also a lot of fun. And so those things are all in support of our Teacher Appreciation Week. And again, that's, those are my comments, and appreciate the graduation.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. At this time, board members, I'd like to announce that our next scheduled meeting of the board is on May eighteenth, 2020. And at this time, seeing no other business to come before this body, I will entertain a motion for adjournment. So moved by Mrs. Giavanelle and seconded by Mrs. Morgan. And please record your vote. Ms. Johnson?
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. We love you. Motion carries seven zero. This meeting is adjourned. Godspeed.